Good evening. Time of five o'clock, having arrived. The Sacramento City Council Evening Session will come to order. Can we please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Yes, Member Ashby. Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Guerra, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and this meeting is broadcast live this evening. There's a replay on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Saturday at 7:00 PM. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. We have speaker slips located on the back shelf. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it in to the Assistant Clerk at the front. And we also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Tonight, we're privileged to have a number of students from the NP3 school, eighth graders, and I would like to ask, if they'd be willing, Arkshat and Aron to please come forward and lead the City Council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on forward. Yeah, you guys. Welcome to you. We'll begin when you tell us.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much, young men, for coming to the City Council and participating. You yourselves may sit up here someday, before you know it. Maybe tonight. Okay. All right. We're going to begin this evening, as I stated the last time, with public comments for meetings not on the agenda. Let us begin.
Okay, we have several that are signed up. We'll start three at a time, as is our normal practice. We'll start with Wanda, and then Eric Frame, and David Andre, and then Armando.
Evening.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I want to stand up and talk about the issues that I'm having with the bathrooms in the downtown area. I can't even visit you guys on the weekend down here, where I could enjoy being at a park and using a restroom without buying something. That's ridiculous. If you guys want the homeless to stop defecating and urinating on the streets of Sacramento, you need to provide bathrooms for them. I believe the restaurant that just opened up, we, as taxpayers many years ago, paid for that bathroom, and you took it from us. And now it's part of a restaurant that now is no longer allowed for us to use unless we use their facility to buy food and utilize that bathroom. Number two, what are we going to do about these homeless people that are on the street? There are 13,000 people on the streets of Sacramento. I know you're tired of seeing, hearing us up here, Jeff, but I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we are having to be up here and talking about this. This is a daily issue. I see people dying. I see people being arrested. I'm seeing people's stuff being taken from them. When is it all going to stop? We can't keep on criminalizing these people. They're humans. They have red blood, just like you and just like me. They deserve privacy. Our city has gingified the areas that they were living in, and now we can't even buy a rented apartment for a reasonable amount. It's time for change.
Eric.
Last week, you witnessed 17 people in a row stand up and talk about the homeless issue. And your response to that was, there's a pancake breakfast next Sunday, or there's something else on the schedule. And there was no response, basically. So I would like a response to, after the public comment, perhaps, and of course, it will be mostly about the homeless issue, I would like a response as opposed to just what we had last week. Mr. Warren, it's nice to see you. If you could give us an update on the looking for a location for the temporary tent city, that would be great. You've missed a lot of meetings recently, and I hope you got something for us. I did hear, I've heard a couple times, that there are too many vacant lots in Sacramento. There are too many of them. So I don't think it should be too hard to find a location for a temporary tent city. I find it interesting that we moved the public comment to five o'clock. A lot of the public works until five o'clock. You're lucky, I'm a mobile worker of sorts, so you're lucky to have me. Thank you. So a response to the homeless issue would be nice. Perhaps a vote to end the no camping ordinance, which is inhumane. Mr. Steinberg, in 1995, you called it inhumane. Now, for some reason, as mayor, it's not inhumane. If you guys need help clipping those strings, whoever's pulling them, you can ask us for help. You know, we're all in this together. Thank you. Love Revolution.
David.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to ask for tonight, some portable toilets. Not the real fancy ones we had, just the regular contractor-grade two toilets. And I know they have to be ADA compliant, one of them, but can't we just rent that on the cheap and put them out here and have them pumped out, like, three times a week? I mean, we do it for our events and stuff, and this would really help the humanity here in this town, because without public toilets, there's a whole lot of agitation and stuff that happens to people. It dehumanizes them. That, and I'd like to still, after all these years, see the water fountains turned on on K Street. The basic human needs, can we address this? Can we address a basic contractor-grade public toilet and rent it and put it out in several locations around here, especially where all the people are, or all the people are sheltering? Thank you.
Armando. Following Armando is James Clark, and then Robert Copeland.
Good evening, council and mayor. I would like to, as my friends, ask about what we are doing about the tent city at the moment, that we had a meeting about, and it was postponed, and now it's, we're not hearing anything about it. So I would like to hear what the problem is, or the process that we are into right now. The other thing is, we need to start working on the anti-homeless ordinance. It's really rough for these people to be in the streets trying to survive. A friend of mine just opened a restaurant at the park. You guys gave him $500,000. And when we asked for $250,000 for tent city, it seemed to be a lot of money, so I don't see how, you know, you can do $500,000 for a restaurant, but you can do something for the public. And we are talking about, you know, over 12,000 people that are in the streets. This ordinance is inhumane, and it's illegal. And I don't think it's right. I think, you know, we all have a place to go and sleep, we all have a place to go and eat, and use the bathroom, and clean ourselves. And these 12,000-plus people do not have a place to go, and you took those away from them. So now we have a restaurant that we invested $500,000 in, that is, you know, we'll probably have problems with the homeless people roaming around. So what are we going to do about that? How are we going to please everybody? We have to please the whole city, not just the restaurant, not just the homeless, but we have to find a solution to this. It keeps getting worse. Every time we come and speak about this, there's always seems a little bit of hope, but then nothing happens, and it just keeps growing more and more every time. So can we please address that? Thank you.
So I'm going to start off with a critique of this move of the public comments. While I do feel that it should be right after a pledge and special presentations for public comment, moving it to five o'clock silences the working community that likes to come and speak out. Over half of our members that speak out here night, every week, are working people that cannot possibly make it here before six o'clock. So, as we move forward, yes, it's a good thing that you moved the public comment to the front, but please don't move the time to a place where the working people can't make it here, because their voice is just as valid as the rest of ours. And then to address the homelessness issue. Yeah, $500,000 for a restaurant that, just last Wednesday, we had a group of people that's been helping feed people, and they walk out right in front of that restaurant. And you've got people that haven't eaten all day, sitting right outside of this restaurant all day long, with no bathroom accessible, because it's all gated off. You know? We're here about human rights, and all the motion that we see is about development and people's personal profits. That's all we get to see. We have a proposal that would be a great move in the right direction with the tent city, and yet, all I see from council is continued resistance towards that proposal. I'm hoping that when it comes up to a vote, that resistance will fade away, and the council will do the right thing, and actually stand up for human rights and human dignity. Also, a full repeal of the camping ordinance. This is the city that started the trend of unlawful camping ordinances around the country. Why not make this city, this, the city that ends that trend, and actually treats people like human beings, not like...
Robert. Following Robert is Victor Brazelton and Dee King.
I want to talk about rent control, because there's no way Sacramento should be the number-one city in the nation for the highest percentage increase in rent. I don't get it. Why? Let's have some more affordable housing. And I was going to an ACE meeting last week, I saw a complex that was totally vacant, and also a house that said Dangerous Building on Route 67 line. Why? I don't get it. So I joined a couple organizations called Tenus Together. They're talking about a more affordable housing. And another group called Housing Now. They want a more affordable housing and rent control in the entire state. And as far as people, the City Council meeting at five o'clock for public comment? Let's have two public comments. One now, and one later on, like, let's say about after six, seven o'clock, when people that are working can actually get here. Thank you.
Victor.
Black people make up 10% of Sacramento. We make up about 45% of the homeless population. The issue that I have is, we gave rewards to the police officers who killed Daisy Hahn. This was a mentally ill man, who was illegally detained in the back of a police car, then released from that police car, chased throughout the neighborhood, and then killed. And that's what we awarded someone with. The thing is, is if you're mentally ill in Sacramento, and you happen to be homeless, having the police called on you makes that a possibility that it can become a deadly incident. As you look tonight, to pass a budget about giving carceral technologies, removing technologies that come from the prison outside on top of officers, the things are, if those cameras are on, and they're showing the death of people, but there's no action that's taken on the other side, Joseph Mann acquitted. The internal investigation that you said that you would be following up on, on the 27th of January, acquitted. There's no action that was taken. So these cameras that you're going to allow money to put on the officers, if there's no policy that changes, if there's no action from this council that makes the policy to change how police interact with people, then we're going to continue to see the same type of behavior that you rewarded. So it's no longer a neutral stance when it comes to the dead bodies that happened from these folks. It's something that you promoted, and that you rewarded those officers for doing. We only make up 10% of the people who live in Sacramento. So every death by an officer is something that concerns us.
Okay, Dee. Following Dee is, I believe it's Lee Si Yang, and then Braden Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Dee King, and I'm the Youth Leader.
Just move to the middle, so we can hear you.
Okay. I'm Youth Leader for the EBC's Youth Action Team.
Good evening, council and mayor. Steinberg, my name is Lee Si Yang, Program Director for the EBC Sacramento branch.
Okay. And we are here because we wanted to thank City Councilmember Larry Carr, who's not here today, Eric Guerra, and Alan Warren, for supporting EBC's Fourth Annual Southeast Asian Youth Summit. Summit was held at Sacramento State on April 28th, and there was about 200 youths from the Burbank-Hair Johnson Grant High School, and also Incentra Junior and Senior High School. Along with that, we also have the EBC, the Young Men of Change Youth Group, that was supported by the Gain Prevention Intervention Task Force. And the purpose of the summit was that we wanted to encourage and expose each of every one of them to continue their pathway to success, whether it was their education or their career paths. We invited many inspiring guest speakers, such as Coach B and retired Captain Wayne Katati from the El Grove Police Department, I mean, the El Grove Police Department, and we also invited the Sacramento Police Department, Corps, and Clergy, members of the Sheriff's Department, UC Merseya professors, pharmacy grad students, and UC Davis grad students, and many other more career fields, so that the students who were interested, they could ask questions regarding to preparing themselves, how to get there. The Youth Summit was to also give the youth opportunity to open their minds, to see how college life is like, and what it feels like to be an adult. By that, I'm meaning that not telling what time to go to class, meeting new people, and being able to make up their new schedule. Most importantly, finding themselves and understand what it takes and to never give up. Because we received the support from the City Councilmembers, Larry Carr, Eric Guerra, and Alan Warren, and many others from the community, we were able to successfully coordinate the Fourth Annual Southeast Asian Youth in Action Summit, and we're here to appreciate and recognize those who helped and support us in order to give back to our community. And again, speaking on the behalf of myself and the EBC Youth Action Team, we'd like to thank you for your generous support.
Thank you for coming and for all your hard work in making the summit a success. Do you have some certificates?
Yes, we actually do. We have a group photo of the entire youth participant that participate in this event, and would like to invite Councilman Alan Warren, Councilman Eric Guerra, and, you know, Eric Carr, but he's not here today, to come down and receive a T-shirt of our event, and also the group photo of our Fourth Annual Southeast Asian Youth Conference. So if you guys could come down and receive this for us.
Sure. We'll take a moment. Go ahead, please. Would you like to stand in for Larry Carr?
Okay, Braden Murphy is next. Following Braden is Jessica Murphy and Lori Littman.
Okay, so it's pretty simple. You're either trying to oppress and suppress the public, or by not having to work regular working jobs, you just simply forgot that most of the public literally gets off at five o'clock. So it's either one of those, and no matter which one it is, it's just really bad. And it needs, public comment needs to be at a time where the public can get to it. And I had originally advocated for moving the public comment up, but not to where 80% of the public can't make it. And so that's just amazing to me, that a group of seemingly smart elected people can come up and have discussions, and then start public comment the moment people get off work, when you have to have public comment cards in before five o'clock. So that's just really appalling. But I just had to say that, because that's just so frustrating. But, okay, so anyways, what I think we should start doing is giving medals to the people who feed the homeless with their bare hands in the Community Dinner Project and unhealthy helpings, and not to mentally ill homeless people who get murdered. That would be a reasonable start, if we award medals to the people helping the homeless. So I'm proud to be associated with the Community Dinner Project, as you guys see, as you pass by every day. And now, my wife, and Ashley Crabtree, and other heroes that are helping the homeless, they've started an organization on Wednesdays. So we'll be out there tomorrow doing that. Well, we were out there last week, my wife had to go to the bathroom, and I found out for the first time in my life, because I'm not homeless, that there literally is no place to go to the bathroom. So I had to give her $2, so she could go into Starbucks and buy a cake pop, just to go to the bathroom. I could afford that $2, obviously the homeless can't. So any urination and defecation that happens outside by the homeless, it's completely the council's fault, because they're not doing anything to provide public restrooms. This stuff is so obvious, and it's just unbelievable, that a group of competent people make public comment at five, and the homeless don't have restrooms. Lastly, I'd like to invite you guys to come out Wednesday, as we're serving the homeless, and explain to them why you continue to criminalize them, just for existing, because they really would like to know. Thank you.
Esica.
So since the person, Ashley, can't be here, she wrote a small thing, she couldn't be here to read, because she is part of the working class, who is not off work until five. I think it's completely laughable that our thoughts have been heard by having us speak earlier, instead of hearing what we are saying and when. We just get "when." Today, it's cold, it's windy, there are people outside who are unable to bundle up like we are, who are not able to go to sleep tonight and get rest, but instead, we are making changes by pushing the public comments up and silencing anyone who has to work and wanted to speak. It's time someone actually does something to answer what we are saying, and we want somewhere for the people to go. We want them to have somewhere to use the restroom, so I don't have to pay $2. So if anybody wants to give me $2, that'd be great. We want someone for the people to go, we want them to have somewhere to use the restrooms to go to sleep, where they are not afraid of being harassed by police, or for simply existing. We want change for these people and our community, and we want to see the council actually care. Thank you. Since I have 50 seconds, I want to say, in 1995, I was five years old, and I was homeless. So let's go back to when I was five, and you tell me what changed. Because homelessness is still knocking on my door, and I can be one of those people. So as a five-year-old child, what are you going to say to me today?
Next, Lori Littman, and then Harry, I believe it's he.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ilanka Slatar. I'm here with Lori Littman, Melissa Romero, and Justin Tweet. And we are part of 350 Sacramento, and we just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Darryl Steinberg for participating in our community forum that took place last Saturday. We had nearly 200 attendees engaged in a day-long process of discussing our future of Sacramento, and how we need to work together with other organizations to talk about the, how all of these issues come together, the issue of homelessness, affordable housing, transportation, climate change, environmental policies, all these things come together here in Sacramento. So we want to thank you for participating. We've provided programs from our forums, so that the rest of you can get an idea of what we talked about. And we'd love to invite you all to continue this conversation. So we wanted to introduce ourselves, so you could see our faces, because we are planning to be here much more frequently, and to work together with you all, to create a vision that we can all share here in Sacramento. So the mayor, during his remarks, called the goal of carbon zero audacious, which is exactly what we want. We want to take bold action, and we want Sacramento to be that model that other cities in the state can follow, and other cities across the country. We know that California is a global leader on climate action, and we think that there is no better place than Sacramento, to create a model for cities to follow all across the nation. We had really great examples during our forum of people who are doing really great innovative things, so we want to work together, again, as I said. So, thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. It was a great forum, Melitan, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Harry.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm here to update you on the proposal to replace the police body camera storage with an in-house solution. I've been working with several in-house storage solution vendors, and I've been getting quotes for the city, to see what the cost would be. And I've come to the conclusion, you know, after looking over the contract, which shows the cost of the storage with Kaiser International is approximately $720,000 a year, and over five years, this would be $3.6 million just for storage. An in-house system will last five years before needing replacement, and have little to no ongoing cost after the initial purchase of the equipment. The initial cost of the purchase of the equipment needed for in-house storage will be far less than half of $3.6 million. The suppliers of this equipment can show us, can set up the equipment and show us how to use the equipment. This equipment would not need, to use this equipment, there would not need to be any additional software installed on the current computers used by the police departments. They would just need to access the storage from the File Explorer application included in Microsoft Windows. Even if the city pays full retail costs for the body cameras, the in-house solution is still a more cost-effective solution. The city stands to save at least 50% of the cost of storage over a five-year period, with the implementation of in-house solution. There will be no delay in the deployment of the police body camera program, because while our storage equipment is being built, we can purchase external hard drives to temporarily store our data that is being collected right now from body cameras. This same equipment that I'm proposing we use is used by several sheriff's department, it's used by the US Department of Homeland Security, and it's used by the University of California. Thank you for your time, and I hope you give my proposal consideration.
Thank you.
Jeffrey, you're next. And then Mac Worthy, and then Pastor Gainsborough, and the last speaker, Rachel Ditmore.
Well, Mayor and council members, I speak of communication, and I speak of, in a sense, irony. The irony is that it took you the March Madness to realize that your maps for the arena in the city of Sacramento weren't any good, and you did correct them. Irony. Last time I was here, I spoke of that your bathroom out here, the disability, or should we say, large style, the seat covers are not held with one screw, so it's real difficult. Irony. It's still there. It's communication and focus. Now, what needs to be corrected is Fifth Street. You had your planners propose a detour sign that blocked the, shall we say, bus access right there, I think it's 425 or 423. Steve has the photos of there. I was there at the time and said, you know, you have commuters for coming in, and you have other buses that come in here. If you look right now, you'll see that RT buses can't even come in here level. Oh, so he moved to the sidewalk. So hopefully, it's still available to the drivers to see that there is the detour, because Fifth Street between J and L is blocked. But I don't think your city planners considered the fact that Kaiser North took out, so there's only two lanes. It is a traffic situation that needs to be realized, and you've got the fair coming up, you know, or the music coming up this Memorial Day weekend. up, you know, or the music coming up this Memorial Day weekend, and if it's only going to be two lanes of traffic, you are going to have a severe transportation issue. Lastly, I will say, you had the ANJAM tour. Oh, I'm out of time, so just simply say, RT said that there would be no interference with light rail, and listening to the traffic of Sacramento's Police Department, there were problems.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Mr. Mayor. Jeffrey, I got your email, but there are no pictures attached, would you resend that? I didn't get any pictures.
I'll send it to you again, send the pictures. Thank you. Good, thank you.
Hey, Mac?
Good afternoon, panel. Dale, I had said, Mayor, Mayor, I had said to you when you come in, that you couldn't move this town, I don't know who advising you, but what I saw here, two, the last meeting, I don't know whether it was a grant, or what was in that package, to bring the young black woman from Washington DC in that position, all the black women in this town and state, the audacity to go and bring a black woman in here, and you got three tricks on the board, and nobody stood up and said a word. One says, "She's a tough woman," you know nothing about, no Washington DC. Where are you going? Your eye is not to lead Sacramento, your eye is on Lieutenant Governor, or the Governor. That's why you're dealing with Washington DC. Wake up and tell the people the truth. When you, when you come here, the people couldn't clap, the man right there. But now, he do what you said to him. Why the ears that a black man on this council, all three of them, if a Jew or a white man put on a podium, they vote "ah."
Excuse me, excuse me, I promised myself I would not engage or interrupt, but when you start using things about Jews making people say one thing or another, I'm going to call you on that, and tell you that is inappropriate for public discourse.
Attorney, MI, NSMAG?
Excuse me, keep race and religion out of your comment, or else, I'm going to ask you to leave.
This man here speaks religious all the time.
I'm saying, when you say that a Jew is going to make a black person act in a certain way, I think that is exciting.
I didn't say nobody's going to make him, you got a dialogue, because you bought him and brought him in here. Mark Freeman was right down here, had never been here, but what their priest mama donated to the arena, brought him to this podium. I knew his daddy personally, along with Bill Burger. So you, you sitting here, you ain't going to move this town. This man here said, you couldn't clap. They clapping everywhere now. That's what we know, rebellion back there, they're rebelling everywhere. What do you use him for? "Ah," on everything you put on the podium. Tent City, you told them no. That's what you told them, no. What are you trying to do, man? You are dividing the city. But, the swamp coming, we're going to drain the swamp, and I'm going to point direct to you, because I'm going to work with ICE. I'm going to work with ICE. I'm going to get in there some way, because I'll be in Baltimore next month. I'm going to work with ICE, and point them to people like you.
Pastor Gainsborough?
I agree with you, Mayor. I don't speak down other religions, and I'm glad you spoke up. And that was inappropriate, the comment by my predecessor. I think it's a good idea to have moved the public comment up, but a possible adjustment to make it even more amenable for the public would be possibly for it to start at 6:00, just for the working folks, it's just a thought. And, you're all reasonable men, it's a lot I'd like to share tonight, but I'm looking forward, hopefully, for you all standing up. Not so much for Alan Warren, but standing up for the human race, next week, when the 100 to 150 bed temporary tent city is coming on the agenda. Councilman Harris took a venture with the pit stop, it was very successful, and I hope that it will be a move toward the public restrooms that we need. To be a world-class city, it would only be, what is it, $300 a month for the ADA compliant double restroom that is in Fort Natomas, because I called the company. There has to be something in Chavez Park. I brought with me a homeless veteran, who fought for our country, and is currently homeless. Tom, would you come up here, in the final time? I hope that, he has no place to go tonight, but he's honorably dismissed from our armed forces. I don't think that any honorably dismissed veteran in America should be homeless, and have no place to stay. Tom, if you want to just comment for a second or two, about your situation.
Yes, the VA is not, excuse me? Oh, Thomas Duprey, D-U-P-R-E-Y. I've been at the VA trying to find a place to live, and they're not being able to find a place for me to live.
Let us, is Mr. Sanchez, or one of our lead staff here, let us see if we can hook you up tonight, or sit down with you tonight, and see exactly what your situation is, and how we can help you, we'd be happy to try to help you.
Yes.
Okay? Who here from the city team can help us out here? There's Kelly, Kelly Rivas, who's, Arturo's coming. Yes, Mr. Sanchez, we have a gentleman who came for public testimony, who is a veteran, who needs assistance, and you do it every week. You help people.
Oh, we go to the left.
Okay, we'll try to help you, sir. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker then...
Thank you, Pastor Gainsborough.
Our last speaker is Rachel, Rachel Ditmore? Oh, Rochelle? Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, it's nice to see you. I've actually brought two of my colleagues as well, Marissa Maldonado and Josue Acosta. First of all, just want to thank you. I think there's something that we have in common, and it's the fact that we are servants. It's why we have chosen the life that we have. It's not because of prestige, and it's not because of the next steps, it's simply because we want to make our city a better place. My name's Rochelle Ditmore, I also represent an organization called City of Refuge, we're in Oak Park. I'm also a mother of six children, whom I have all raised in the Oak Park community. I've been a resident there for 17 years. And, as you are probably aware, over the last week, we've had three shootings that have involved Oak Park young men, and three of them, all three of them have ended in death. City of Refuge, we believe in collaboration. We have collaborated with our district attorney's office, we have a letter of endorsement from them, we work with our attorney general's office. We joined in collaboration this last year with Sacramento City Unified School District, where we have seen over 550 girls come through our program Shine. And that was really a result of our housing program, and seeing many young women that have come through, and story after story, that trafficking began at nine years old. And we hear those stories, again, and again, and again. We're here because we are aware that city funding for programs such as Summer Night Lights is not accessible to us this year as a community. And what I would love for you to reconsider, is that there are organizations, like City of Refuge, like the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, who is doing incredible work, organizations that are sustainable, that we've had a history, organizations that are made up of public servants, just as yourself. And we know that programs are not what change lives, relationships do. Having anchors and pillars that stand, and will continue to stand in communities, where young people can feel like they can come back, and they have a place to come back to. We have been one of those places. Schools are one of those places. I believe the Fruit Ridge Collaborative are one of those places. Our community center is one of those places. I do not want to come speaking only on behalf of ourselves, but would ask that you would reconsider designating funds. We have a program that we are launching...
Need to wrap up.
I'm sorry, this summer, called the Grit Academy, and we have young programs for men and women, and so if you would reconsider those funds, we would love to approach the city and ask that.
Okay, we're happy to talk to you. Let's talk, okay?
Okay, let's do it. Thank you, Mayor.
See what we can do, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Jay.
That concludes public comment.
That concludes public comment. Let us next move to special presentations. I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Ashby for presentation number one, regarding the Natomas Pacific Pathways Preparatory NP3 Middle and High School.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a real privilege for me to get to do, this group is very special to me. Some of you may recognize a few of the people in the audience, particularly who I call Coach Rutten, Tom Rutten, who was the coach at my high school, SAC High, not that long ago, right? Okay, let's not talk about it. Yeah, no, don't talk about it. But now is, and then later went on to be principal of SAC High, principal of Christian Brothers, and currently is principal of Natomas Pacific Pathways NP3, out in Natomas, and a school that was started as a partnership between McGeorge Law School and Natomas Unified School District, that has a law focus for middle school kids and high school kids out in the area. So, I'd love to give them an award, because this is really exciting. I think Melissa and Lindsay, you're coming forward, right? Why don't you guys come forward? This is Melissa Mori, she's the high school principal, and Lindsay Anzel, she's the middle school principal. There is a whole cast here with them, that I will talk about in just a moment. But, they received a very prestigious award, you can just stand at the podium there. And I'd like to read the resolution, which sort of lays out for everybody what the award was that they received, but first you should know that they've won a lot of awards, been a distinguished school, they've been recognized multiple times over for their academic programs, but this one is just particularly special. Mayor, I think you're familiar with this award, but Chief Justice Toni Cantil, and State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Torleksen, co-sponsor the Civic Learning Awards, and they recognize 50 California public elementaries and middle schools. So across the state, they pick 50 schools that are the highest achievers in civic learning, and they award them. The awards celebrate public schools' efforts to engage kindergarten through 12th grade students in civic learning, and they also help identify models that could be replicated at other schools, so that our young people get an education in civics. Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep, both middle and high school, earned the highest honor possible from the Civic Learning Award in 2017, for the second year in a row. In addition to having learned, in addition to having earned the Award of Distinction in 13 and 14, this is a really big deal, and Justice Cantil, along with several members of the Ninth Circuit Federal Court Bench, came to NP3 for a presentation in front of all the student body and administration, and gave these folks a wonderful award. I had the opportunity to be there, and it was really fun to talk about the importance of the Ninth Circuit in today's culture, a very good learning experience for civics. And just to give you an idea of what this school produces, I think probably they would agree with me, the best spokespeople on behalf of them, and I'm just going to ask them to stand, are Melissa Owen and Sam. Would you stand up, please? These are three seniors at NP3. All three have been volunteers in my youth advisory committee program, and my parks leadership program. One of them is a former parks ambassador, meaning he owned a park in our district, and took care of it for several years. One was actually a paid intern out of our office. Melissa Lupita heads to Stanford next year. Sam Wergler heads to SAC State next year. And Owen Wergler heads to University of Nevada Reno next year. And these are just three of the seniors out of NP3, very representative of the student body. Sharon Messini, and Tom Rutten, and Dave Hunt put this school together, and they brought a group of people with them here today, Tania, Ashley, Deb, Sumidi, and I think I saw Danielle walk in, and there are a few of the middle schoolers here, too. Would you guys stand up? I saw Akshar and Dominic, and his Aaron here, too. You guys stand up for just a second and wave. These are some of the middle schoolers from NP3. At our receipt, this one here in the front is a published author. Akshar has won several awards for publishing his own book, I think he's working on his second book right now. These are extraordinary young people. They are not just, you know, kids that show up and meander through a day of education, they are high achievers, and I'm counting on them to take District 1 to the next level, as they get older and older, and I'm really proud of them, and grateful to have you both here today. Would you like to say something about the school, or this award, or what you strive to do for the young people there?
I just want to say thank you for the recognition, we're really proud of this, receiving this award, and I think there is a ton of hard work, and efforts, and dedication that go into the work within civic education. I'm the principal of the middle school, so I think it's born there, and the kids learn a lot of democracy pieces, and participate in a lot of different aspects of their learning. And it provides great opportunity for what they learn at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for recognizing us tonight. Again, our students are, who we are most proud of for this accomplishment, we strive to create global citizens, and I think that they are going to go out and serve not only this community, but the country and the world very well, because of the skills that they have learned, through our law-themed program at the high school. So again, thank you for taking time tonight to recognize us, we are very proud of this accomplishment, and being one of just three schools in the state.
Mayor, if you would join me to take a picture with this group...
One of three, one of three schools in the state, you say? I mean, that's really outstanding.
For the second year in a row.
And is, was there ever a time for, to emphasize civic education? Thank you.
So if you could, if all of you from NP3 would come down to the front and take a picture with the mayor, and I think that would be good.
Yeah, Steve has a question. The only thing I wanted to add is, I want to see you come back and go to McGeorge. McGeorge is a great law school. If you don't come back and go to McGeorge, you can go to the mayor's alma mater, UC Davis. But, no cheering for UC Davis, it's prohibited in our chamber. But wherever you go to college, you are our future, and we want you to return to Sacramento. You know, go visit the world, but bring your ideas and your energy back here, because we need you.
Thank you.
Three, one, two, three. Good.
You've been standing for two, three years. Where are we at, two? Yeah, in two years. Thank you, Mayor, that was a real privilege to get to honor NP3, thank you so much.
I'm going out to visit. Thank you very much, Angelique, thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Very good. We now move to presentation two. Turn it over to Councilmember Harris, for an organization I've heard of before, called the Sacramento Tree Foundation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have two resolutions of recognition...
Two, sorry. You're doing the conservancy, too.
Yeah, I'm going to do them together, because they're tied by the California Parks and Recreation Society. So we're going to honor tonight, not only the Sacramento Tree Foundation, but also the Sacramento Valley Conservancy. So Ray and Amy, might you come up to the podium, and Charlie, if you're... And Charlie, if you're here from CPRS? So I'm going to tell you a little bit about these organizations, and then perhaps you guys can say a little bit about each. So the Sacramento Valley Conservancy is based upon the principle that open lands are necessary for quality of life. And that's really kind of a basic piece of the mission, to preserve the beauty and character and diversity of the landscape. So they work with willing sellers to create dedicated open space, right? From the acceptance of gifts, private purchase, the facilitation of public acquisition, conservation easements, and cooperative efforts. So they're being inducted into the Hall of Honor of the California Parks and Rec Society in the category of Regional Treasure, as is the Tree Foundation. So y'all know about the Tree Foundation. They were started in 1981. The Tree Foundation has been at the forefront of promoting the value and importance of trees as having a powerful impact on air quality, climate change, energy conservation, water quality, economy, comfort, habitat, and public health. And the Hall of Honors recognizes them in a tribute and commendation for the foundation's efforts and record of achievement. So would you all like to say a little bit about maybe the Parks and Rec Society, and then the Conservancy and the Tree Foundation?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Sandy Cucola. I'm Chair of the California Park and Recreation Society District 2 Hall of Honor Committee. And along with me tonight are committee members Barbara Watford and Charlie Willard, both city residents, by the way. The California Park and Recreation Society, or CPRS as we refer to it, provides resources for parks and recreation professionals and is a public advocate for those professionals and the agencies in which they serve. Recreation Parks and Leisure Hall of Honor was established to recognize, document, and promote significant and historical recreation, park, leisure contributions to the quality of life in the northeastern section of California. We encompass 19 counties in the northeast section. The program provides the opportunity to chronicle the events that have helped shape California's local park systems, leisure, and historical programs and facilities, recognizes significant programs, areas, or facilities, and the sponsoring organization Collaborative Partnership Foundation or Individuals, which is these two organizations. I interpret the significance of recreation, park, and leisure services in improving the public's health and wellness. We are honored, the Hall of Honors is very honored this year to induct these two organizations into the Hall of Honor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Amy?
Thank you. Amy Rutledge, Executive Director of the Sacramento Valley Conservancy. And I've come before you all and the county board of supervisors many, many times over the years to talk about different partnerships. We're particularly excited to be doing a 13-mile expansion of the American River Parkway down to the Deer Creek Hills Preserve in the county. And that takes a long time. It's taken about 20 years, but these good things take a long time. And then we're very excited to be leasing and managing Camp Pollock and to have helped the state acquire that property, the old boy scout camp just on the other side of the river, five minutes from here. And I'm headed there next for one of our board meetings. We're in phase two of renovating that lodge and providing that space to the community. It's 11 acres. That's pretty amazing and magical. You feel like you've stepped out of time and away from the city when you go there. And that's what we try to do, is create that environment for people to be able to enjoy nature and do it right in the city where we live. So we're excited to help provide extra quality of life and to keep partnering with you all. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that Camp Pollock is an extraordinary place to go, and it literally is about four or five minutes from here. It's a remarkable stretch of the American River. It's a very beautiful spot, and I encourage you all to go visit. Ray?
Good evening. Ray Atrathaway, Executive Director of Sacramento Tree Foundation. We're very honored to receive this prestigious award in the Hall of Honor for the Parks Society. It really comes with a great volume of work that exists in every one of your neighborhoods, and quite frankly, nearly every one of your departments touch our urban forest. So I want to share with you tonight, though, is that you also are part of the recipient of this award, because the Sacramento Tree Foundation was founded at the request of the mayor of the city of Sacramento, back then Phil Eisenberg, and at the request of the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Isla Collin. So it was the vision of our local government, our local leaders, that said, we need a voice for the trees, and we need more trees. So I hope you receive this award as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I know, I appreciate that history, because, I mean, your work, the Tree Foundation is one of the great institutions in our entire community, and your work, despite the fact that we already have a beautiful canopy of trees, your work continues, continues, and continues, and we're very grateful. Jeff?
Stay there for just a second. So let me put it a little bit different way. Be it further resolved that the Sacramento City Council takes the significant opportunity to express its profound and heartfelt gratitude to the Sacramento Tree Foundation for the legacy of this exceptional, the legacy this exceptional urban forest provides for the people of the city of Sacramento. And for the Conservancy, be it further resolved that the Sacramento City Council expresses its profound gratitude for the lasting legacy of the preservation and protection of unique and significant landscapes on behalf of the people of the city of Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, and the state of California. So I'll come down and get a picture with you, too.
That's exactly what I meant to say, by the way.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yes.
One last comment. We're only about six weeks away from embarking on building our urban forestry master plan. So this is a great step forward for our urban canopy, and I know that you'll be a worthy participant.
I know Councilmember Ashby has a comment, but we go down and take the pictures? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, he's headed down there. I just, you know, want to point out something that happens when the Tree Foundation gets involved. Ray and I really wanted to do a tree line in the North Natomas Regional Park, and we worked on it a little bit, and it fell short of being selected as the recipient of the Japanese tree line. But we still pursued it, moved forward, and those trees were put in last year, and the tree line is beautiful. And we were able to do an urban forest through the middle. It's layered three deep of different kinds of trees that they helped us pick out that would be good for the region, and they were partially mature, so they're already beautiful, include pistachio trees, which, if you know those, they turn bright red in the fall. And so that's the type of work that even just having them in the room gives you the ability to have a bigger dialogue, even if you have to seek out funding from another direction. So I wanted to thank you for that project. It's beautiful in our district. Thanks for your help.
Thank you, Amy and Ray. Appreciate it. Okay, those are the presentations. Let us move now to the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have items 1 through 12 on the consent calendar. I want to note for the record that we did have item number six that was noticed for a 6:00 PM public meeting notice, and we have arrived at 6:00, so it can remain on the consent calendar, does not need to be removed. I have no other changes, additions, or corrections, but we do have three people that are signed up to speak. So item, the first speaker is Jay, and I apologize for this pronunciation, but I can't read it. I believe it's Larry, for item number three. Macworthy for item number 11, and Jeffrey, if he's still here, for item 11 as well. So we'll start with Jay. Jay here?
Jay?
I don't see Jay. Okay. Mac?
Jeffrey's up there, I'll get him. Thank you.
Good afternoon, people. On this mass transportation, these are the things that we want to get Donald Trump involved in to check some of the money, because this is racketeering. Now, all my grandkids and my daughters' addresses to my address. Now, we got a $425 ticket was done in January. What is the holdup? All of them will come to my address, all of them, but she got a $425 ticket. You got something going on. Racketeering there is the same way it is on parking, racketeering. And when you stop and look at who is hired, you got buyers of hiring on your mass transportation. These are the type of things that I will be putting in a letter to Mr. Trump once he gets his people coming in and saying, "Swamp, we got to do so, people." Because we find out that all the black folks talk about law enforcement. Here's law enforcement, they don't say nothing about it. Ladies and gentlemen, that gonna be, you can do what you want, that gonna be, law and order gonna be, because you don't want me to carry law and order, because it wouldn't be fair, I'd eliminate you. This is where you racketeering and lying to the people at. How many people ride mass transportation? What is the design of mass transportation? You can't even go to a shopping center on mass transportation. You can't get to the airport on mass transportation. To the courthouse and to the state and county, that's all. You're planning for people only to work for some form of government. Where is our free enterprise? Where is our free enterprise? Because you lied. You sold the city to developers. Where's the profits they go? Go out. They don't come here. Where are the people that have the knowledge to cut through the red tape? They ain't in Sacramento. They're out. So who's calling the shots? Be aware, we'll find out sooner or later who's calling the shot, because most of your tricks should have left here with you previous math.
Okay, Jeffrey?
My apologies, Mayor. I believe this is item 11 we're discussing. Sorry, I've been phone calling. And Steve, you should have the material sent to you.
Just looking at it.
Okay. What item 11 was, I'm hoping, is for dealing with is, my question was, I believe you have a four-plus-year contract with regional transit, is what this appears to be. And it previously was all just a couple of years. So the question I was asking regards was the GS4, which is something that is more RT than your forward. And for those members that are on the RT board, I certainly hope in the presentation of the RT's budget, this information will be disclosed in the budget. And that's my comment to this city council in more transparency and being more revealing that RT can likewise follow suit in providing much clearer budget information. Gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
And lady. Thank you. Thank you.
It's public comment on consent calendar.
Okay, that includes public comment on consent calendar. Are there any members? If not, can I take a motion? Moved by Councilmember Shenear, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes on an eight to nothing vote. We now move to our public hearings, and we begin with item 13 regarding the 800 block of K Street.
Correct.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Veezy with SHRA. The report before you requests approval of a $4.5 million loan commitment and a $60 million mortgage revenue bond issuance for the construction of the 800 block of K Street project. The 800 block project is a new construction, mixed-use, mixed-income housing development that will have 148 apartments consisting of 118 market rate units and 30 affordable units in two six-story buildings. The unit configuration includes a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms. 800 block will also include subterranean parking, rooftop terraces, community center space, and a landscape courtyard, as the developer will describe in a brief presentation to follow my presentation. The project will be developed and managed by CFY Development. CFY is an experienced owner and manager of affordable housing. In partnership with SHRA, CFY is currently developing the 700 block of K and will soon begin rehab of the Bellevue Apartments, both in the same vicinity as the proposed project. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the funding commitment and mortgage revenue bond issuance for 800 block of K. Here with us tonight are Cyrus and Ali Yusefi of CFY Development, and Mr. Ali Yusefi will be giving a brief presentation of his own to help the council visualize how the development of 800 K will result in the further transformation of the city's downtown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yusefi. Please welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, fellow city council members, for the opportunity to present our project to you tonight. I have a brief presentation that I'd like to walk the council through. I am Ali Yusefi, CFY Development. We're a local affordable housing development company based here in Sacramento that focuses on mixed-use, mixed-income infill development. Before I talk about the 800 block, I'd like to give a brief update on the 700 block because I think context around the site matters. The 700 block, as the council knows, is the half-block between 7th and 8th Street on the south side of K. CFY Development partnered with the city and with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and DNS Development, another local development company, to start this project. We broke ground in 2015. As has been the case with this project from the beginning, we've faced challenges along the way, including during construction, but I'm happy to report that we are close to completion and will be opening the apartments in the fall. I'm also happy to report that leasing has been going great on the block. The property, which includes 137 apartments, has about 70,000 feet of retail space. We've signed 10 leases with predominantly local businesses that will bring a very unique mix of retail to K Street and complement the new development surrounding it, a downtown commons, and some of the other new development that's underway nearby. The 700 block project is located next to the 800 block. The 800 block was a property that the city had selected another development company back in 2010 to develop, but because of the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, that city went back to the redevelopment agency's successor agency. And the 800 block consists of a vacant corner on 8th and K Street, as well as three buildings that surround the historic Bellevue Building. The areas that are highlighted in yellow is the land associated with the project that we are presenting to the council tonight. The Bellevue Building, though, which I'd like to quickly mention, is 22 units of affordable housing above ground floor retail, which we'll be breaking ground on later on this year. So to remind the council, the 800 block was part of a rofer that was given to the Sacramento Kings in 2013. The Kings decided to allow CFY Development to purchase the Bellevue Building and to do historic preservation adaptive reuse project, bring low-income housing tax credits and historic tax credits to build 22 units of affordable housing above ground floor retail. And then the Kings decided to partner with CFY Development on the remainder of the site, and that's the project that we're presenting to you tonight. And again, the Bellevue Building, which is highlighted in blue, and this is a black-and-white rendering of the Bellevue Project, this rendering will have color in the next couple of days, but it shows you the historic preservation that's taking place in the middle of this 800 block project. So the 800 block is 44,000 square feet of land, and again, was entitled in 2011 originally by David Taylor. When the Kings and CFY started working on this project together early last year, we looked for an architect who could bring a fresh design perspective to downtown. We knew that this is a highly visible corner, and we wanted to develop something that would be iconic for the neighborhood. We selected WRNS Studio out of San Francisco to be the design architect, and we worked with them on massing models and design concepts for the two corners, both 8th and K Street and 8th and L Street. This was one of the early massing models, and as we developed the design of the project, it morphed into the development that you see in front of you tonight. The project includes 148 apartments, 30 of which will be affordable, and 20,000 square feet of retail space on K Street, L Street, and 8th Street. Some of the resident amenities which Susan had mentioned earlier include community space for the tenants, onsite property management, secure parking, rooftop terraces, and a courtyard at the second level, along with a unique design throughout the units and the common spaces to make this a one-of-a-kind multifamily community. So we worked with WRNS to create a building that we thought would have interesting massing. We didn't want to drop a big flat box on the corner of 8th and K Streets. As you can see, we drastically set back the building and have created a second-level courtyard that overlooks K Street that would be for the residences. We also worked closely with city staff, Bruce, Matt Sights, Evan, Carson, and team on continuing to improve the design of the building after we submitted for site plan and design review in February. Some of the changes are incorporated in the rendering that you see here, including a reveal of the corner of the Crest Building, which we set back our building to show some of the details which make that building pretty unique. One of our focuses, in addition to creating high-density housing for the site, was to activate... activate the streetscape. Creating pedestrian-friendly development is one of our priorities. And so it wasn't just K Street that we were focused on activating with retail space, but also L Street. This is the corner of 8th and L that you're seeing, which is across the street from Frank Fats and Sutter Club. The three buildings that are currently on this corner would be demolished to make way for this six-story building, which would have five floors of housing above the ground floor retail and residence space. Timeline, we received approval from SHRA Commission on May 3rd. We are hopeful that if we were to receive approval from the council tonight, we would make a May 19 Sidlak application, which is on Friday. We've been working diligently with the Kings since we started on this project last year to get something built on this corner as quickly as possible, given all of the investment around it and the need to redevelop this key site for downtown. If we were to submit our application this Friday, we are hopeful then that we would get into plan check and be able to break ground on the project later this year. And it would be about 22 months of construction and then lease up thereafter. I want to jump to this slide quickly and make a couple more comments. So the 700 block, as was mentioned before, is a public-private partnership with the city. And SHRA used some of its last redevelopment funds that it had before redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2011 to help kickstart this $55 million project. Similarly, Bellevue is a partnership with the city and with SHRA, and this 800 block is also a public-private partnership. Between all of these developments, we are bringing over 300 units of housing to this intersection and along with that 90,000 square feet of retail space. The fact that we were able to use scarce resources for affordable housing to also help build high-end market rate housing and retail space is, I think, something that we should all be proud of because what we're developing on this corner is an incredibly diverse mix of housing. We have not only very low-income and extremely low-income housing units, but also high-end market rate units. And so as we look at the way that we want to build our downtown and build our city, I think building diverse neighborhoods that provide a range of housing for all is a great goal for us to have. And there is obviously the need for many more housing units, but I'm proud of the fact that we are building such a diverse community in this neighborhood. I want to thank SHRA's team, Christine, LaShelle, Tyrone, Taryn, who couldn't be here today, Susan, for their help. This is obviously not a conventional project. It's been over a decade, I think, since an 80/20 project was financed in downtown Sacramento. So this has been challenging and they've been a great partner along the way. I'd also like to acknowledge my partners, the Kings, who aren't able to be here tonight. I'd like to thank them for giving us the opportunity to continue the development on K Street with more housing and more mixed-use transit-oriented development. One of my partners, John Cicerone, is not here, but my other partner, my dad Cyrus, is here. I'd like to acknowledge him. My dad has been building affordable housing in the Sacramento region since the mid-'80s and there's no question that I wouldn't be able to stand here and work on this project if it wasn't for his continued involvement. He is the brains and the muscle behind CFY still, and so I'm lucky to have him as a partner. With that, thank you, and we are here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Ali. Let's, we do have some public testimony. Are we done with the, with the presentation? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll take the public testimony and we'll open up to the council. We may bring you back up for some give and take.
Okay, so we have two that have signed up to speak. We'll start with Jeffrey and then McWorthy.
Well, I won't be the last word, but affordable housing, that is two studio units and one bedroom unit. That is all that meets the 50%, the 30% of affordable housing. What originally was a 200 apartment project, it is now down to 148 units. This is a drop in the bucket. The other thing for you members that are on RT is realize that is the most popular intersection for the light rail and, you know, you're going to be having interference. So please, I hope that RT is well-aware and that the city plans and accommodates how you construct this with 8th Street because you already know the problems that you've had on 7th Street. If you don't, please find out, okay? But again, yes, I won't be able to go to Sacramento Housing Redevelopment's, this meeting because I have another commitment. So you won't see me there for that one, but it was interesting. And again, like the other kiosk up there that shows you what this is, I hope you guys have read through this to understand this and understand what this project is. Removing the old Harveys, removing where the old Tower Records was, isn't that the block that, you know, Mayor, that it was on or was it the next one? 7th or 8th, you know, right in there was where I believe both Tower Records and the old Harveys was in the '60s. But anyway, that's my comment to you guys. Please, I'm not suggesting that you do, just I'm insisting you examine more the affordable housing and realize how few units are being developed.
Where's those kids that you're gonna give jobs? They should be here and ask you, what is the return on this investment? How many jobs you gonna produce? But you run these things through because developers own this town. The Kings knew that. That's why you won't give a financial statement on the arena. This is what we want a resolution on, a financial statement, a financial statement on SHRA because we want to, how did you come up with $2 million and you had a trust fund? You didn't have a trust fund when you started here. It was what I had raised by the trust fund. Now 80% of that is $2 million. And then we're gonna go buy. Didn't this happen to Depp Hester Heights in South Sacramento? The light commercial property was turned in to heavy commercial, to residents. You closed the residents down in Depp Hester Heights in South Sacramento. Now you're doing here. What have we seen out here since I've been here? We seen water run down K Street? None. Retail, let's look at retail. When you buy online, the city of Sacramento don't get that cell tax. That cell tax will go where the city that has purchased, the warehouse. Tell the people the truth. That's corporate America getting ready to console. That's what's getting ready to do. You can't rely on retail. So $15 an hour, where's that money? The babies can't afford gas tax up in retail, $15 an hour? The arena only has 60 jobs in concession. Where is the big money jobs? Tell the people the truth. It wasn't no intent. There's no intent for nobody to live down there in low-income housing and you know it. You know that. But you will sit here and lie and will not say a word. The community, why don't you invite the community to come in and listen? You move the public comments up because I know what you done in Curtis Park. Where are the black people on a Sunday morning when you have this meeting in Curtis Park at church?
Okay, that concludes public comment.
Okay. Let's talk about the project. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is a good day. And there are three reasons why I really feel strongly about that. First, I get to thank some people. Second, I get to talk about why this project is awesome. And third, I get to talk about why this is a good financial deal. So first, Ali, you obviously recognized your dad. I hope Cyrus, you know that we appreciate you, but we appreciate you, what you made along with your wife and Ali. He's been a gift to the city, as has your family, and so thank you for all of your hard work. Leslie Fritchie has done a tremendous job working on these projects. I think since about 2004, if I remember right, maybe earlier? 2002 Leslie? Or 2004? This is 13 years of effort. And I told Ryan Willis once that this was, this 800 block was the wart on the butt of downtown. And I think, you know, we now, as we move forward on this, break ground this year, get to focus on other blemishes on the, on the face of downtown and the city because we certainly know that we have other blight. And I just think that gets us to the, the housing agency. LaShelle, you and your staff have worked hard to make these deals happen. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor when he was pro tem, helped us with the Department of Finance, unstick the 700 block, although the state took a big price, which was giving up the money for the 800 block as the pound of flesh that they claimed in order to let us move forward with the 700 block. So I'm glad that we've gotten to put together a project with the Kings and others. Randy Cost, I don't see him here, but I know he, he was the lead for them on, so that's a big deal. The history of the site, it's been at the core of the downtown since our inception. And the challenges with development here, for a lot of different reasons, have, have been ones that, that we worked very hard over several city councils to try to surmount and that we've gotten to this point, I think is a testament to some of the people who came before us. The preservation of the Bellevue, that is a, that's a big legacy. You know, there are a lot of people who would rather torn it down. And I know particularly the legacy of CFY is to save unique buildings, love historic buildings and bring them back. And, well, Jeffrey talked about three units. I actually have to correct the record, there's 30 units of affordable housing out of the total amount, which is 20%. There's three at 30% and 27 at 50% AMI. So that's, that's a big contribution to workforce housing. And that's a, that's important. I know that not every project can be 100% because of the loss of redevelopment, but this mixed-income housing strategy is a winner. It's worked on 800J. Are you laughing, Mayor? Because...
Sorry. Angelique and I, and I have a running joke.
I know, I know. I was trying to get past that. Nobody intended for redevelopment to go away, but because the League of Cities sued and, and we didn't think it through, we lost redevelopment. No, no blame here. But, but I do, I do think that it's really important, as acknowledging the importance of housing in our 10,000 units, that we celebrate the challenges of this particular site because this site will help unstick a lot of other projects adjacent. We know that the 731 site on L was just bought, thankfully, but that, I sort of call it the L Street alley, which is the blocks of L between 7th and 9th, which we've treated like parking garage row. Ali, during the arena process, we worked to make sure that the L Street side of the arena was pleasant, was pedestrian scale, was approachable because they wanted to put loading docks there. You in changing the, the face of L Street with this project with your partners will help us turn those other parking garage faces into much better streets for people. And I'm not talking about the actual alley, I'm talking about the street itself. So thank you for that. Finally, the mayor was so overwhelmed with positive emotion, he had to leave. I think he's crying with joy in the back. The final thing, I'm really inspired that this is a loan, you know? In the redevelopment days, we had grants to give away. We didn't often get that money repaid so we could lend it again. Here, what I understand from the agencies, there's a very strong repayment schedule. So we'll be able to relend these funds as they come in. And I think that's, that's a really strong point from a business perspective for the city. We can do more deals because we did this deal. And that's a, that's an evolution of the way we, we do things. And I think it is the future. And so with all of that, Ali, you're the future. Along with your partners, this block is the future of downtown, this way of financing is the future. And Ryan Willis is sitting somewhere smiling. So thank you. I'll move the item, close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Let me bring up next Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, Steve pretty well covered all the points. I'd just like to say that it takes courage and vision to take on a project like this. And I think, Ali, between yourself and your dad Cyrus, you have both of those in spades. And we are in fact grateful to you for not only your skillset, but your willingness and ability to take on this pretty bold project. So adding a bunch of affordable units and market rate units is critical. As we found in our housing workshop a couple of meetings ago, we have a truly critical shortage of dwelling units in Sacramento. So to get more units, but not just numbers, but quality, you know, it's, it's really a fantastic addition to the inventory in Sacramento and very much needed. So we would like to support you in this project and wish you all good luck. And we know from your previous projects that you'll do a really good job. Thank you. You, you really are contributing to the future of your city in a very big way, meaningful way.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Shenear.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I want to be very quick. I think Steve and Jeff have said it all. I'm particularly interested, I think the only way we get out of the housing crisis is through really expanding supply. And 300 units downtown is a step in that direction. We need a lot more. So we're gonna keep you busy for a long time on that one. I'm particularly happy about on the 700 block and in the Bellevue, saving kind of the history of Sacramento and redoing those buildings rather than taking them away and doing something else. I think, I know that's caused a lot of heartache along the way and a lot of surprises as you went. So for that extra effort, I particularly want to say thank you. I want to thank the proud papa back there. He's like doing this with, for you, Ali. You can't see that, but it's all good. So thanks very much for all your work.
He is proud papa. He back there just smiling and I tell you, boy, he's proud of you. Good job. Councilwoman Ashby.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to Councilmember Hanson and just being in the seat to get this across the finish line. This has been a priority for everyone who's represented that area, me included when I had it, and also the downtown revitalization core. And Steve and I have had some opportunities to work on 700 and 800 to keep pushing them. The mayor and I joked a little because I always tell him how difficult redevelopment is in the wake of having lost that funding from the state, which, you know, he was, he happened to be there when that happened. So I, I love to pin it on him as often as possible. But the truth is, these projects are very difficult for us to figure out how to do without redevelopment. And I think there are two reasons, and they're both in the room and they're both people, that this project happens today. And this is, you know, my opinion based on where I saw this project start in 2010. I was newly elected and not yet sworn in and these two gentlemen came out to see me in Natomas and explained to me something that I have come to know very well now, which is new market tax credits and how to fund housing. And as far as I can tell, the only person I know who really knows how to take that philosophy and concepts around similar to that philosophy and really turn it into housing is Cyrus Yusefi. That is the only person I know, not just in Sacramento, but in the region, that knows how to do that. And then the second piece of that is, you have to have a government partner who then is willing to work that same policy forward and move housing and not just affordable housing, but a mixed model of housing forward. And that is very clearly LaShelle. So this project has had great champions, none better though than Councilmember Hanson. And I think two people who were really just hell-bent to see housing on K Street actually happen and have a mixed component. And I've seen a few versions of what might land there. This is by far the most beautiful. And then just one last thing that Ali brings to this equation that I would think everybody in Sacramento would be grateful for. I've walked through lots of developments with developers, especially representing Natomas. There's new development all the time. But there is a big difference between Ali's mentality in serving Sacramento and other developers' mentality. They all have goals, but his goal and keen eye for preservation is unmatched in our region. And if anybody doubts that, check out the R Street Artist Lofts. I walked through there. He literally framed out portions of beams where people had signed things so that when we walk through, we could know what it felt like to be in that structure decades and decades ago. And if you ever saw him the day that he got the keys to 700 Street, they just got, you know, their flashlights. They were like kids having a sleepover. They were so excited to look at every nook and cranny. And that's what's making these projects so exciting, like the historic preservation piece on the old Tower Records or this 800 block and the preservation component here or the R Street piece. And not just preserving it, but then making it available to everyone by having low-cost housing and high-end housing in one, you know, sort of marketable place that puts people back on K Street. Your vision, Ali, is leading the city and I think it is remarkable and I'm so glad that you're doing it. And Cyrus, thanks for telling us how because I don't think we could have done it with all the visionaries in the world without you giving us that mechanism. So this is really a big moment for Sacramento. Congratulations to Councilmember Hanson on your hard work and LaShelle and Cyrus and Ali, what a wonderful team. Leslie, good job shepherding them all, keeping them going in the right direction. It's very exciting for Sacramento. It's very exciting for Sacramento.
Standing. Councilmember Geta.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. All I could really say to add on here is, Ali, is you and your family, you embody the spirit of Sacramento, that pioneering, that can-do attitude, visionary, and really changing the, that, that limit and putting everyone else in our city to push you even further. And I remember when I first showed up to this country on Eighth and L from the, I think it was Eighth and Seventh, from that Greyhound station. And since then, looking at how this will, and seeing how this will transform that entire area, all I could say is, is, you know, we hope that this type of visionary thinking happens throughout the entire city. Thank you to your dad and everyone on this, and proud to second that motion. Mr. Mayor.
Well, I can, can't add much to what's, what's already been said, except to pick up on what Councilmember Geta just said a second ago, this is the model, right? So we want to do over and over and over again. Because it's not the only part of downtown or the city that needs this sort of vision and investment and, and hope. And grateful to you and all of the, and the redevelopment agents, LaChelle, your team, Leslie, the city staff. This is creativity at its best, and it's, and it's not accepting mediocre. And terrific, just terrific. All right, we got a motion and a second. Public testimony having been, and Steve, thank you. Fabulous. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. I think the ayes have it. Congratulations. Way to go. Okay, we now move to the, back to the budget. And we begin with file item fourteen, which is the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year fifteen sixteen report. We welcome you.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. I'm Chris Shipman for the record, and with me is Jamie Matthews, Chair, and I'm the co-chair of the Measure U Committee. On behalf of the other members who are Cecily Hastings, Sarah Scandreeny, and Michelle Bratmiller, we are pleased to present, this is the third report of the Measure U Committee. For the record, the voters approved the City of Sacramento's Essential Services Protection Measure U in November two thousand and twelve, authorizing an additional half-cent transaction and use tax effective April first, two thousand and thirteen. The one-half cent sales tax will continue for six years and is due to expire on March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, something that this council knows very well. The responsibilities of this sales tax targeted to restore and protect essential services, including the nine-one-one response and other central park maintenance, youth slash senior services, and library services. The, and the responsibilities of our committee, as defined by the ordinance approved by this body, includes three. The amount of revenues generated by Measure U to review, the allocation of revenue reflecting the services and programs funded by Measure U, and the results of the committee's review of the city's annual independent audit as it pertains to the use of Measure U. Jamie Matthews, our Chair of the Committee, will go through the report and will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Jamie Matthews. I am the Measure U Citizen Oversight Committee Chair, and I serve as a CPA representative on the committee. I am also a senior manager at a local CPA firm with sixteen years of auditing and consulting over a variety of state agencies, including cities. We have a lot of details in our report, but I'm just going to highlight some of the items that are in there. First off, we noted the amount of revenue generated from Measure U for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen was forty-two, forty-two point eight million dollars, and two thousand and seventeen is budgeted to generate forty-three point seven million dollars. An important item that we emphasized in our report is that the Measure U Fund is projected to have a deficit, AKA negative fund balance, of thirty-three point four million dollars by the end of fiscal year twenty.
If it's not renewed, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, if it is not renewed, yes. The city is therefore projecting that they will be unable to deliver the current programs and services provided and protected by Measure U after fiscal year nineteen without another revenue source, like as if you were able to renew it. Along with this is the fact that the current, that the city is currently not projecting adequate reserves to meet the standards in the Measure U fiscal management policy that was adopted by City Council on May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. We also wanted to reiterate the importance of a timely transition plan addressing the expiration of Measure U and the phase-out of services funded by Measure U. In addition to reporting the revenues, our report also outlines the allocation of those revenues reflecting the services and programs that are funded by the proceeds of Measure U for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. As a result of that review, we recommend the following. That the, that the city continue to highlight projects funded by Measure U, and the committee would also like to see specific Measure U-funded historical performance outcome. Lastly, we reviewed the city's annual independent audit report, and we noted that the audit report appears to be in accordance with City Code. We noted that the Measure U Fund is reported as a major governmental fund as a special revenue fund, and that the independent auditors' report expressed an unmodified opinion. We also recommended in our audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, that the City Council engage independent auditors to conduct performance audits to ensure that the city used the Measure U proceeds in accordance with the provisions listed in the Measure U ballot language. The City Council implemented our recommendation and did receive those performance audits annually with unmodified opinions. That concludes the presentation that we, I have on the report unless anybody has any questions.
We have two that have signed up for public comment, so we'll start with those. We have Dave Genet first, and then we have Mac Worthy, and then there's one with no name on it, just says Measure U, but no name. Might have been you? Okay.
This is the only one I'm aware of.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Genet.
Counselors. Restore essential services. I've read that ballot measure several times, as it was being proposed, rewritten. Not many of you were on the council that are sitting here today when we discussed that and why it was so necessary, and why we were concerned about some of the federal grants that we're going to be drawing out and put this city in even more desperate straits. This is my twenty-second, twenty-second year appearing before you. In the last several years, you've seen members of my community, members of Crime Watch, members of Patriot Defenders Network, Inc., which just went out of business because we can't afford to operate in this city or this state of California. But we saved a woman from being raped by two men at Fourteenth and J Street while we were on a game plan, thanks to the police officers over here that know how to work community policing. As a matter of record, I spoke to one of the officers today about this individual, trying to get him help. We've been doing this a long time. Essential services and the city manager, when Measure U had its first round of money, said, let's see, we got two-hundred-and-some oppositions cut from the police department. Let's give them three back. Do anybody remember that? You were here, Mr. Hanson. You weren't happy, Ms. Ashby. And I can tell you, my community was outraged because we worked for something. We came here. The reason I'm here alone tonight from the hospital, all those people that used to come here and have that two-way dialogue when this gentleman was on the council, we could have a conversation, I could ask questions, get answers. Remember those days? No more. Two minutes, got to say, get the hell out of here.
Mr. Jake, I wanted you to interrupt for one second. Only to say, your time's up, but you're signed up for two other items.
Yes, sir.
I'd give you the, the opportunity to, to speak on those items now.
No, no, sir.
Because if you're, if you're not, no, 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 if you're not feeling well, it's okay.
I'm not asking for anything special. I'm a citizen here.
No, no, it's not, it's not special.
I have a responsibility to be here.
It's not special, but just, I would like you to, to have the time now so that you don't have to wait to sign up. That's my, the chair's discretion, okay?
I don't feel that's fair, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Plenty of...
I want to hear, I want to hear if there's anything different then from the staff reports. I want to hear from the police department, fire department.
Just a little worried about you, that's all.
Don't worry about me.
Okay.
I've said more than once, if I, if I have to die trying, that's what I'll do. So here I am.
Okay. Well, we don't want you to die, so, okay.
Okay, Mac Worthy is next.
Mr. Worthy, this is your fourth time testifying tonight, and this will be your final time.
I have a right to do so.
This will be your final time.
First of all, people, no more cell tactics. Homeless people, take my follow. This is a time to bounce back for not giving you your housing. Now, we want to use the police department grants and the tax change. We want to identify, everybody give a grant to the police department through the tax change of the federal government, and we identify whose money coming in. The police department will get those grants, but we want to be able to identify that money for who it come to and how it got into the city's treasury. Measure U money was misused. The minority neighborhoods got nickels and dimes. They didn't get the real thing, did they? That money was used, somebody right back there told Ashley that money got into the Kings. It wasn't me, it was somebody else. There have never been an audit of dollars on that money. What I mean, a financial statement, how it come in, and what went out, and what went to John Farnes. Now, John Farnes is a click. That is a source fund. But follow the dollars while it come in and checks. To retail association, write your check. That's what we want to see on a financial statement, and we can follow the money. But other than that, you cannot follow the money, because when it gets here, it names something else. So people, homeless and other people, I'll help you put some flies together, start now. No extensions on cell tax no more, because corporate America going to control that by online purchasing. So get out, get there, and don't, because you don't own no retailers, and what they're saying, the housing, we'll put some mix with it, some retail. They could have done that in their past hikes, but they didn't. So what we're saying, the city is running a monopoly on property through redevelopers to own the city. It never will be a big-time town.
There you go.
So, on the issue of the Measure U funding, I find it very disturbing that we're very close to possibly being in deficit again on our entire budget, because this makes up a large percentage of our budget. Well, budget expenditures for certain issues. And without that funding, after looking at the full budget report, the city's budget's going to be in debt because of the loss of this funding. That's a major issue. But also, I think we need to look at how we spend money in this city overall. You know, we tend to have to put all kinds of money into all these new developments and aesthetics, but we don't take care of the people in our city. The people struggle in our city, the people suffer in our city. You know, it might be, might not be easy to see when you're going to fancy restaurants or the new bar in the middle of the park, you know, but there is suffering. And we do need to make sure we keep the Measure U funding, because some of that should be going to help alleviate that suffering. You know, it's not a bad thing to develop housing and this, that, the other, but it is a bad thing when you do so with wanton care for the people that are suffering in your city, when you're allowing the rents to continue to rise in your city to the point where those that are working are now having to work two jobs just to be able to afford a place to live. You know, this is not beneficial to the city. Maybe we should also look at the happiness index when we look at our economic standpoints, because Sacramento is one of the most depressed cities in the world. And I don't see this council looking at that aspect when they look at these budgets. They only look at what new development they can get. They get all giddy every time they hear developer money coming in. I wish we could see that same kind of happiness when someone comes up with a great idea that would actually help your citizens.
Okay, that is the last comment. Do we need to move to receive and file this? Okay. Thank you, the council. I want to thank, we want to thank the commission for its very, very important work here. Can I mention what you mentioned to me earlier? So this is the only city commission that has all women. So I think that's a great thing, even more of that. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ashby pointed that out to me earlier. So, good. Let's move now to the Fire Department proposed budget, and that's file item fifteen. Chief?
Mayor Steinberg, member of, members of City Council, Fire Chief Walt White. I truly appreciate your time and attention this evening, as I share with you the proposed, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen proposed budget for the Sacramento Fire Department. The proposed budget is a hundred and eight point seven million dollars, which includes, which funds six hundred and seventy-three full-time equivalent positions. Six hundred and twenty-two are sworn, fifty-one are civilian positions. This budget reflects a transfer of five FTEs from the Fire Department budget to Central IT. Fire and police are the last departments to make that transition of their IT personnel from the department budgets to the city's Central IT budget. Additionally, a budget change is also included this year with the transfer of one FTE, our captain in the Office of Emergency Services, transferring from the Fire Department budget to the Office of the City Manager. Measure, Measure U funding funds a hundred and three positions. It has helped restore all of the browned-out fire companies that were pre-recession, put us back to the pre-recession levels. We have an additional, it also helps fund twenty-seven full-time equivalent positions that we acquired through the SAFER grant, which is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, a federal grant. It allowed us to increase services by staffing Truck Forty-Three in Natomas and adding two additional medic units for a total of fifteen full-time, around-the-clock dual-role firefighter paramedic ambulances. And additionally, it funds one senior fire prevention officer position. We have one-time Measure U funding of six hundred thousand dollars for personal protective equipment. This is the first step in our addressing the OSHA Title Eight requirement. It'll allow us to replace one-third of our frontline personal protective equipment that is so essential for our firefighters. Within three years, we will have two complete sets for all line firefighters of NFPA, National Fire Protection Association compliant gear, personal protective equipment. Our crap, our capital improvement plan includes one point two-five, or one, two-point-five million for fire stations fourteen and fifteen, to complete both of those projects within scope. An additional one point four-five million for early replacement of additional fire apparatus. This will keep us in efficient fire apparatus and help smooth the purchasing requirements of apparatus replacement in future years. Furthermore, it includes six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars for air compressors. One of these is a mobile unit that will respond out to fire scenes and fill cylinders from our self-contained breathing apparatus on the scene of emergencies, and two others are mobile trailers that... mobile trailers that can be moved or strategically placed where they can be used on a regular basis. This will allow us to place our new self-contained breathing apparatus into service. Before I move on to conclude and move on to questions, I did want to state that I am in regular communication with city management regarding the city's service demand needs and the department's key resource needs. As part of those discussions and my request, the city manager has authorized that I provide three additional peak hour ambulances on a daily basis as staffing and equipment permits. Furthermore, we are taking several steps to improve our cost recovery of that service, make it more sustainable, increasing the, our cost recovery efforts. We'll be adjusting our fees to accurately reflect the true costs of service delivery, including an upcoming proposed transport fee adjustment, a first responder fee. Additionally, we'll be further working towards our efforts to improve our billing processing. Once those efforts have been completed, the city manager and the fire department will consider ways to make those additional resources available on a more permanent basis. So with that said, I would move on to questions.
All right. We, thank you very much, chief. I know there will be some questions, certainly about the last part of your testimony, which I know discussed as well with the city manager and is a very interesting and maybe important proposal here, so we want to draw that out a little bit. But let's get, let's take the public testimony here first.
Okay. So we'll start with Chris Andrew and then Pastor Gainesborough.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, city council. I appreciate the time. First, I want to say we appreciate the one-time resources that are going in the budget this year. I think it would have been more appropriate to do those at mid-year, but what we're missing still is the ongoing services that we need. I feel like this is déjà vu again of last year where we needed 24-hour ambulances of battalion chief, and now really Station 9 is, is coming into play as a station that needs to be reopened. That station closed 20 years ago. In the budget documents, we talk about the 58,000 jobs in the Poweryan area, kind of the, I forget the term, but the force of the city and the, and the new jobs. That same area down there on Poweryan is where all the new grow warehouses are going to be, the permits for the possible marijuana growing that's going to be happening in the city. All that's happening in Station 9, those 58,000 people that work down there, plus the residents, plus the businesses, they don't have station coverage because that fire station is still not open. Obviously, the city has different issues that are coming forward in future years. We've got to be careful in our costs, but we can't just stop the city. We can't just not add resources to a fire department that desperately needs them. Our ambulances are overwhelmed. We need a more management, mid-level management with our battalion chiefs, and we also need that fire station open. So, as we move forward, I don't, you know, 522 is again standing here pushing for budget items that I, I'm not sure if other unions do that, but things are not getting done in our fire department. I think you all remember, and I realize that for, for some of you weren't here last year, last year we were going to have a master plan in about a month. We still don't have that master plan from the fire department. So, we need help, and we're asking the council to consider your priority, which is public safety, is, is a community's priority also, and I hope they'll fund more ongoing services for the fire department this year.
Thank you, Chris. Can you comment on Chief White's discussions with the city manager and with me, and you and I have talked about this as well, about the three peak, the, the potential of three additional peak ambulances and, and figuring out the budget to be able to, to fund those peak ambulances?
Well, I'm not sure what exactly that detail, the details are on the peak hour ambulances. We have flex car ambulances that we had before staffing crisis in 2014, and we ran 12-hour ambulances every day on overtime. Guys would come in and work when there was, when they could, and we'd run one or two usually in that time. I'm not sure how you're going to fund this in the budget. Well, we really, peak hour ambulances would help, but we really need still a 24-hour ambulance, like down at medic, at fours at Alhambra. Our guys are just getting beat up 48 hours straight, and they, they need some kind of rest.
Well, in terms of how to, we want to talk to you about it.
Okay.
Talk to you about how we add the, add the capacity. That's, that's, you know, this is outside collective bargaining contest, but this is a service area issue. We want to figure out a way to work this with you and increase ambulance capacity, especially during peak hours.
Sounds good, Mayor. You know, as you know, 522 are always open to trying to figure out new solutions, so let's see what we can do.
Okay. Good, thank you, sir.
Okay, Pastor Gainesborough. Pastor Gainesborough is next, and then we have Roberto Padilla, Dave Genet, and then Ron Emsley.
Pastor?
Mayor, council.
On the fire service, sir?
I am speaking about the fire budget. I, I'm glad for the brilliant restaffing or reconfiguring over the peak hours. I thought that was very, very bright six, eight, eight months ago when I saw that. The $13.5 million city expenditures on the homeless this last year, half of that was billed to SAC Fire and SAC Police. It is granted that most of that is spent mitigating the homeless situation rather than solving it. It is better to light a candle than to spend all the time cursing the darkness. For a solution, well, what could we do? Angelique Ashby in her district, in her district, has a ADA compliant restroom that if you would stop, is it Fort Natomas? What is it called, by the playground, the library? What is it called? Okay, we're by the library, anyway. The cost is only $300 a month. If you've been to London, if you've been to Paris, and if you've been to Rome, if you go to world-class cities, there has to be some type of public restroom. I've been to all three of those cities multiple times, and a world-class city does not leave the least and the broken and the lost on the streets to, to defecate and to leave waste. And so I just want to plead that you all are too bright to leave the homeless with no public restroom in Chavez Park and also next to Fire Station 14, which could easily have the, it's being built 50 feet from where the pit stop was. And, and additional addenda, which Councilwoman Ashby said that was a good idea, the building designs, I've talked with Chief White, even though the plans have been drawn, plans can be redrawn. I know I need to stop, but let's, let's do the human decency for our homeless and provide public restrooms.
Thank you, Pastor Gainesborough.
Padilla?
Padilla. Good evening, Mayor, council. Roberto Padilla, Sacramento Firefighters, Local 522. The last time there was any significant additions to the Sacramento Fire Department was back in the mid-'80s. That's when the Sacramento Kings actually played at the Sacramento Sports Arena on North Market Street. There's currently no additional significant equipment being requested for this budget year. The peak hour ambulances are good, but we're the fastest or one of the fastest-growing cities in the state of California. We're calling for more housing units. The reality is that we run more than just medical aids. In 1987, we ran just over 30,000 calls for service. Now we're running close to 90,000 calls for service. The number-one priority in your recent budget forums was public safety. We're asking you to please take that serious. There has been extreme expenditure by the city to get independent reports. The standards of coverage report clearly stated that we need more than just ambulances. We need to address the fact that we're trying to grow our city, and we want you to make sure that you're well-informed so you're able to lead us and give us the equipment that we need to serve as the permanent community. In addition to that, there's the risk that goes on with development and construction. We just saw in the Bay Area recently, the large fire that happened in a large apartment complex. These are all risks that go with developing a city, and it's going to be resolved by having more than just ambulances. We need frontline responders, engines and trucks, and that's all been stated very clearly in the standards of coverage report that was paid for by the city to get an independent, unbiased opinion of what is needed to properly serve the citizens of Sacramento. We're basically running 300% more calls with the same amount of people for the last 30 years. So it's important that, again, we start understanding really what we do. Just recently, there was a fire here on J Street, Luca Restaurant. I know if any of you have heard of that place, but they were very appreciative that the fire was quickly extinguished. The Sacramento Fire Department provides more than just basic service. It's a policy that ensures that the city will be solvent. It brings revenue, it brings safety, and it makes the community feel safe. And that's very important when you're inviting people to come into the area, especially with large events, the arena, the river, we're talking about developing these things. We're simply asking for the tools that we need to do the work that we need to provide.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
Dave Genet. Following Dave is Ron Emsley.
Take your time, take your time.
You're sitting in a room with a couple of emergency first sale EMS people, people who operate emergency centers, and a lot of fire people in there, these are great guys. And this crowd, I appreciate what's coming next, and to kind of lighten the load, you say, "Well, Mrs. O'Leary, I'm in the fire. How was the barbecue?" And you realize, only a couple of people laughed, you know, you're old. The Great Chicago Fire. Station 2 been there and they knocked it down, because they've knocked me down a couple of times, and I'll tell you why. You know, I'm a stubborn old coot. Last time, somebody worried about me, said, "Yeah, I gotta go," I tell you. Hate it, don't want to go there. 224 over 190. You're right. Take me, you see that? Got a problem, folks. 21 years ago, I wonder why the police department couldn't get in my building? Paid 170 bucks for a thing to go through the gate, one front, one back, sometimes two. It's called an OX box. You might remember this, Mr. Steinberg, because it took 10 years for Robbie Walters, Sergeant Tom Cooper, and a group of my neighbors to come to you and beg you to trust our police officers as much as you did firemen in this city. You'll remember that, won't you, gentlemen?
Okay, please address the council, Mr. Genet.
SHRA and some other city properties are swapping out those boxes that allow police and fire again. They're back to being fire-only. We want to know why.
Thank you, sir.
The fire department, they're in a perfect world, but Sacramento's not a perfect world. The fire department always wants everything, and that detracts from other resources for the rest of the city. Now, the fire department, Local 522, is well-organized. So well-organized that I got around election time last, I got, got a postcard from them. Well, a week later, I got this. Can anyone project that? Thank you. So I got this one week later. This is 52, oh, that's another one, 522. They're hugging, you know, big smile.
What, what's this, what's the point?
The next week, huh?
Go ahead.
The next week, they're organized again. So this is the third week. They're sending out these, these things, Local 522. The, the police union, it was just a tag-along. They, they don't have their, theirselves together. So the fourth week, this is how aggressive they are, because they want what they want. And sure enough, there again, a hug and a smile. Let's see. Gee. The fifth week.
Mayor, I have a point of order.
They sent it out.
Mr. Emsley, this is really not about the item. I mean, if you have a qualm with 522.
I'm, I'm sorry. Speak up, please.
This is really not addressing the item. This is addressing a single council member.
Yes, it is. I'm, I'm trying to show how they work.
Okay, finish, you got 20 seconds, so please finish your part.
Well, I got interrupted. Here's another one, sixth week. Here's another one, seventh week. They're, they're, they're trying to, this is all paid by the, that, okay. Then here's Angie, two. This came out in the Labor Bulletin. Here she's smiling, and 522.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
Could I just have one more?
No, your time is up. Thank you. You may, you may, I think we, I think we understand your point, that you, you not, don't like 522.
Well, they showed up on the, at that meeting, they showed up on our dime.
Thank, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes.
You're welcome.
Campaigns are won, campaigns are fought, campaigns are won and lost, it's, we.
It goes further than that.
We work together. Okay, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, aside from, from the campaigns, won and lost, I lost that one, by the way, in case you're on this seat. How that landed for me. But any rate, back to the fire department and their budget. It is unique for a union to come in and advocate for the tools to be able to do service. There, I've been here a long time, and, and, you know, the department heads, the chiefs and stuff, it's their job to come in and advocate for the department. The union members don't always organize around that effort to come in and say, "Hey, we'd like more ambulances to serve the people," or, "Hey, we'd like another station or another battalion chief." I think that that's important to be heard, because it is literally advocacy for the community. And so we just need to hear that and make sure we understand from our chief and our administration standpoint, when we might need those things and how they might move forward. I want to start my comments by thanking the mayor. He has gone out of his way to work with the city manager and city manager's office as well, and Arturo Sanchez, on how in these difficult budget times to do something with ambulances, and I think the idea is very good. It may not go as far as 522 wants it to go by starting with peak ambulances, but I have a little experience in my own district with starting with a peak ambulance, and as the need around that ambulance grows, then it becomes a 24-hour ambulance. So it is a good place, in my opinion, for the city to start and be able to grow that ambulance service. And then the idea that the chief brought forward about making sure our revenues are commensurate with the other entities in the region is really an important discussion that I think Arturo Sanchez and, out of the city manager's office and the mayor have been pushing, and I think that will help us tremendously with getting this budget on the right line for ambulance service and being able to get those medics that Mr. Genet talked about and the pastor talked about that are so important in terms of getting, getting that medical service out to the community and getting them connected to these emergency rooms. I do want to mention, ask the chief, and if you want to come up, you can, and I heard the 522 guys say, and I've heard some of your members say, in addition to the ambulances, that there is a need for a battalion chief and, and Station 9. And I know you agree with that, but maybe just not the timing. So I'm just wondering if you would, at some point, be able to give us an idea of what the right timing would be for a battalion chief addition? I, I think I understand that you wanted it for an HR and the diversification and the recruiting process. If I'm wrong, let me know. And then Station 9, what kind of timing you think, obviously, we have to wet it up with whether or not we have budget and Measure U matters, but what is the timeframe for you on those items?
Like every department in the city, you know, we all believe we could use additional resources, but that's got to be balanced as, as time and funding permits, and I'll remain in constant discussion with city manager on what I believe are the resources, the key resources needed to, to meet the city's service demands and to also manage the workload and supervision with our members. You know, we, as, as Ben's mentioned, we've done a, a You know, we, as Ben's mentioned, we've done a series of analysis, you know, some of those are our best practices, recommendations, and obviously, everybody would like to see us achieve best practice. But, you know, we're also understand that there's a finite amount of funds available and, and we are working with city management.
Sure.
Towards those goals as time and funding permits.
And Station 9 already exists, correct?
That's correct.
And I remember, I think it's in your district, right, Councilmember Garrett? Because I remember Councilmember McCarty, there was a discussion around natural gas that didn't end up happening, but that was out in that community and part of the program was going to be, do you remember this, Jay? If they were going to put natural gas back in, in that community, then we were going to trigger the requirement to bring Station 9 back on. I think around that discussion, it might have even been Jay that asked for it, that we got costing on what it would take to retrofit that station. Remember that? And then it came back and, so I would be interested to know what that even was. I know it exists because I know we looked at it relative to that SAC natural gas discussion and I remember Jay asking for the costing on that item. So maybe you could, maybe Nico or somebody would remember where that is and we could find it. That way, we'd have an idea, if we don't do it now, if we put it in the renewal or we're looking at it and if there really does become an additional need around marijuana in the area that we want to have that facility, then Councilmember Garrett would have the right numbers to be able to champion, as Councilmember Harris did on the two stations in his district that are getting much-needed updates. So that would be my ask of you to hunt down that information and see if we have it. And then the next thing I wanted to talk about is something that the mayor and I have been talking about and maybe I could say something and you could tag on to it. But I, one thing I would really like, Chief, and City Manager Sanchez and Chan, for this city to think about is how we could do something like what we're doing with the impact teams in the Police Department on the ambulances in the central city. I think it would be so helpful to have mental health clinicians on the ambulances in the central city. And it is right in line with what the mayor talks about wanting to do. It is right in line with what 522 would like to do and what you have said you would like to do. So I really think that we should cost it out, figure out the pilot. I know that Chad, is he here? Has been working on this with, in conjunction with Metro on a pilot project and they talked to the mayor and I about it back in DC and I, I want to make sure that we push that. I really believe that the relationship between the mentally ill population in our urban core and the first responders of the EMTs is more core than even SAC PD and we might be able to do more to alleviate some of the burden on the emergency rooms and address some of the problems that we throw PD into that is really unfair for them. They don't have any tools, it's not medic, it's not a fair situation for police and it is something that I think we could prepare our medics to deal with when they arrive. So I would like to ask, and hopefully the mayor will join me in the ask, that this be something that we look at and figure out what the costing would be and who our funding partners might be and how we could partner with the Police Department to have the two impact-type teams working together to be far more effective in terms of how we treat mentally ill folks in the city of Sacramento.
Yeah, I will comment in just a second, but I'll return to Councilmember Hanson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just really have a couple of things I want to address. First, thank you for a good presentation and for all the work that your folks do. Last fall, you came to us with a master plan proposal, but I don't think we've gotten the final master plan back.
We have a, kind of a closeout master plan meeting scheduled with the Fire Department Administration, Local 522, and we've requested Assistant City Manager Arturo Sanchez sit in on that. We believe that that could be our final closeout or wrap-up meeting and our hopes are to deliver a draft of that master plan to the city manager prior to the end of the month.
And you expected to come back here sometime in the summer or do you think fall?
It'll go to the city manager and draft forum and, and then it'll be his call from there.
All right. Well, a lot of the questions that are coming up are relative to the strategy of the department, the, the equipment, the locations. And I think as the city grows and changes, I think having a strong master plan in place should guide us and as we make those decisions. Certainly, some stations need to be replaced and we're working on two of the worst stations getting replaced. I know there would be others. But I also think as we look at that plan, not just the physicality of it, but also the operations of the department and how it evolves, part of what Councilmember Ashby was talking about, I think is really important, and you and I have talked about this, the modern delivery of paramedicine. And I know you, you've been thinking about this, particularly the integrated delivery of healthcare and paramedicine and the continuum of care, how it fits in. I think the biggest concern I have at this point is the lack of integration or comprehensive integration with the healthcare providers so that we, as we deliver care, especially for people who frequently call, and that we better triage those people with their providers, particularly the hospitals that will receive them as emergency visits, or sometimes they maybe can get primary care through local FQHCs, federally qualified health centers, if they're not through some other type of care. And I think that the structure of our department has not yet evolved to be as efficient when it comes to some of these modern practices. That's not a criticism, I think it's just the nature of the, the way these departments were created and operated. And sometimes it's just the way that we're funded. You know, the, the reimbursement models don't always cause us to invest in the infrastructure that could prevent, could prevent returns to the EMS system, but also sometimes they're not created to, to see what outcomes we're creating. And I think if we get to an outcome-oriented focus, just like a lot of the other healthcare delivery system, especially as we play our role in it, I think we'll have a healthier population, we'll hopefully have fewer calls, but we'll also better be able to deliver that paramedicine that, that's so critical for the community. And, you know, I don't think that this particular master plan will contemplate that, but I think we need to get there. And Mr. Mayor, at the state level, there's been some efforts around data sharing. Sacramento County has not opted into that through our EMS systems, but I know that there is some work and there's some, potentially some grant funding out there. So I, I think beyond the physical needs of particular ambulances and buildings, I think figuring out how to do better what we do so that everyone is well and that we can use our resources more effectively is another layer of that master plan that, that I think I'd encourage you and your compatriots to really look at. And I raised this with 522 as well because I think it's one of the secret opportunities to really get community health into a better place.
Good deal. Thank you, Steve. I want to pick up on your comments in a moment too, but I want to get the rest of the council. Councilmember Harris.
So I think, I think, Chief, we're kind of all focusing in on the same subject. You know, at Cap2Cap, I know that you've talked about more creative ways to deliver healthcare to a special population, mostly, you know, homeless calls, indigent calls. I know of at least one jurisdiction in the Northwest where they have a special unit that has an EMT, a paramedic and a mental health practitioner doing just service calls for the homeless. So addressing those very special needs and are able to do that pretty efficiently. So there's obviously lots of ideas sort of focusing down on the same tenet, which is how do we deliver service effectively and relatively inexpensively within the budget and the confines? I know that you have some pretty creative ideas about peak ambulance hour coverage and at some point, I really think you should deliver a report back to council about all of these ideas that you've been exploring so that we can have a pretty robust discussion on this very subject. It's an important thing to think about, you know, the single role paramedics is a possibility. We've discussed that here at council in the past. I think what, last time was a standards of coverage where the manager and 522 were going to try to get on the same page and just understand that they could, so they could use the same metrics, the same figures and sort of come to consensus on that. So there's still a pretty robust discussion to be had and we keep poking at it from the edges, but at some point, we're going to really have to grasp this thing by the tail. So I would ask you to sort of coalesce your ideas and bring them back to council.
Good deal. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Chief, as much as I want a new fire station opened up in my council district, I appreciate your earnest response about being, understanding of the overall budget constraints from our entire city and how we balance those priorities. I think what I'm more interested and concerned about is Station 10. We've talked about it, about the, the age of it and, and the, also the issues of ensuring that we're moving forward with the exhaust issues, the fact that the dormitories and the way that it was engineered, that, that's caused concern. I think in a report from 2006, when they did the Capitol Outlay Report, they identified mold issues from back then and I, I think you guys have looked at, tried to mitigate that stuff. I think Chris, Chief or Captain Acosta-Mania brought that up before, but I guess I'd like to know where are we at on addressing the, the immediate impacts of Station 10 so that it, so that as we look at that on the, on the next list of rebuilding it, what are we doing for the safety and the, of the firefighters that are there now?
Any other, well, would you like me to address some of these comments now or wait till the end of council comment? Because when, in regards to the exhaust system at Station 10, Station 10 is on our, our list of stations that we feel is dated infrastructure that is, you know, is on our list to pursue replacement. However, you know, it's, we're, we're working on replacing two functionally obsolete stations now. We have another, that Station 4, that's probably ahead of Station 10 on the list because it's the oldest active fire station in the city and it doesn't meet seismic safety standards. However, when it gets to the exhaust issue, we were fortunate to recently receive a three-quarters of a million dollar grant for exhaust extraction. So we are on target to re-put exhaust extraction systems in all 24 of the city's current fire stations.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that and we can move Station 10 up a little faster, that'd be faster too.
We'd love to.
Thank you, councilmember. Couple of comments. First of all, very good presentation. And look, we know there's a lot of need in standards of coverage and, and I know I hear it and I'm learning as I begin, begin this journey and, you know, we have a lot of building relationships here and we've got a lot of work, a lot of work to do to get there, but everything must be balanced within the context of the overall budget, as we always talk about. And, and the other equally compelling priorities, including what we're going to hear in a few minutes, the issues regarding with the Police Department, but we'll get there. I want to pick up on Councilmember Ashby's idea here because I think it's really innovative and it's one I fully support, but it really connects with Councilmember Hanson's broader vision of, of integrated healthcare and then Councilmember Shneer, even though we didn't talk about it tonight, the work that he is doing with Supervisor Kennedy and others on, on pay for, pay for success. We have got to do more intensive outreach to this, to the homeless population, help homeless people. And so, and look, I'm not responding to anybody in particular, but I get asked every week, well, what are we doing? I don't want to jinx it, of course, but by the end of the month, we should know whether or not we are going to be the recipient of this whole person care grant. Now, this is not just any grant. It's $80 million, including the healthcare systems and the FQHCs.
Eighty or eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty.
Over five years, $16 million a year over, times five, over five years specifically to address the plight of the homeless in Sacramento. And the elements we've talked about many times, it's intensive outreach, it's case management, it's, it's supportive services and it's housing. And on the outreach side, who, who beyond police and fire are the, the first responders? And I know, I sometimes think we put an unfair responsibility on the men and women of police and fire. And Councilmembers, Councilmember Ashby's idea, I think, sort of reflects that notion because if we can add the trained mental health professionals to ride along with firefighters, then one, it's not all on you and two, you'll have the coupled experts to enable you to actually maybe know how to better help somebody or how to better refer to somebody or how to better intervene. This has the potential to be a powerful idea. But in addition, we hopefully are going to have the capacity to pay for it and a lot more to ease the frustration that, that understandably exists out on the streets and in our community. So I just want to thank you for bringing it forward and for focusing a lot of the attention here on the fact that you are, along with the Police Department, you're the, you're the point of contact, you're men and women of the point of contact.
If I could address.
So bring it back, what that would look, what that would look like with the mental health outreach worker, please.
I look forward to doing that. I wouldn't mind just addressing some of the comments here. My management team, my department have, have been exhaustively evaluating, there's been a dozen pilot programs in the state. Very appreciative, just prior to this meeting, I met with Emily Halcon and Arturo Sanchez regarding the whole person care, the $80 million grant that you're speaking of, and I'm very appreciative of you making phone calls and reaching out since Sacramento County was the only county in the state with a population of over a million that didn't apply for this, but that we're eligible, we're eligible to. And we're, we're interested in, in being a big part of that, being fully integrated in that. You said, we've, there's been a, there was, over the past year, there's been a dozen what's referred to as mobile integrated healthcare pilot projects in the state. We've studied and evaluated all of them. We see promise in a few that we would like to replicate here. To Councilmember Hanson's point about information sharing, HIPAA, the second P in HIPAA, which is the Health Information, Privacy and Portability Act, the portability is that exchange or share of information for the continuum of care. I want to, very thankful to this council, who last council meeting on the consent agenda approved our participation in a precarn, it's a pediatric study with UC Davis Hospital. We're one of only three departments to go through the, the process to fully provide the information sharing needed for them to do this evaluation to enhance life safety in pediatric care. So I think I have a command staff that's very forward-thinking, especially on all of these EMS-related issues, to address Councilmember Harris. I look forward to reporting back to you the, the research that we have done, the recommendations that we'll make and the efforts and steps that we are, are planning to work, work towards in order for us to provide better patient-centered care here in Sacramento and actually be a model for other departments, other cities to replicate. So I'm actually very appreciative of all the support of the board or the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, one last comment, then we're going to move to police very quickly.
Just one follow-up comment. You know, Chief, I think as we get into the integrated healthcare issue, one of the things you said is we may not have the competencies in-house to set up those agreements, particularly the HIPAA and healthcare law issues. I think we should talk, City Manager's Office Chief, Mr. City Attorney, on how to get there because you've raised HIPAA as a barrier in the past and I'm, I'm happy to hear you finding ways through that, but I think HIPAA should never be a barrier to better care as long as we have the right agreements in place to not expose data that shouldn't be exposed. Otherwise, you know, but if we need to bring someone in to help, if we need to bring someone to help with that, I think we should because it'll save us money and provide better care.
Okay. Very good. Yep, we should work through those issues. Okay, that is police. We're going to take the final two items together, file items 16 and 17, and ask Police Chief Louie to come on up and present. Louie to come on up and present.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, Mr. Chan, Madam Clerk, Brian Louie, you're in, and Police Chief. This evening, I'm happy to share with you the overview of the police department's budget for fiscal year 18.
In addition, I'll go over the asset forfeiture master plan. The budget summary, as a whole, the fiscal year 18 budget totals $136.6 million. This budget represents an increase of approximately $800,000 from the previous year. Total staffing has decreased slightly to 1,040 FTE, a change of 18 positions. Additional sworn personnel were added to the marijuana policy and enforcement program, a total of six positions. And there's a reduction in civilian personnel is due to the reorganization of IT functions that I'll go into in more detail later in this presentation. Budget adjustment includes four adjustments totaling $1.5 million of Measure U funds. The adjustments include $98,500 to support increased costs with investigations technology, $300,000 in safety equipment and supplies, which is, these are all one-time, body worn cameras, $875,000, and training vehicles for the academy at $223,000, a total of one point, just under $1.5 million. A little bit about the, excuse me here. The one thing about, I want to give a little update on the body cams. Oh, wait a second here. Let me get back one more. No. On the body cams, the total project is going to be 1.2, but $876,000 is going to go toward the body cam project. This is going to allow us to finalize the implementation of the body cams program. To give you an update, we currently, as of September of this year, we anticipate the completion of the program in September of this year. To date, we have about 150 cameras out there that have been deployed to our specialty units and our patrol division. And the last thing is the 223,000 is additional training vehicles that I had mentioned. Those are to allow the conversion of our current police fleet of the Crown Victorias into a more robust utility vehicle. So we currently have five, and we needed five additional to accomplish that. I had mentioned about the citywide IT consolidation. It's something that we propose to do, the consolidation of public IT into city IT. That reorganization is going to transfer 24 FTEs to city IT. In addition to that, the city manager has proposed the transfer of the Office of Emergency Planning to the city manager's office to create a strategic citywide approach to emergency planning. This reorganization will transfer three positions, including the conversion of one sworn lieutenant to a staff aide and associated services and supplies. The reason that we recommend this is that city manager has statutory responsibility for emergency planning management under the California Emergency Service Act. The roles involve largely department outside and disciplines outside of the law enforcement arena, and the vast majority of municipalities in the US place their emergency management as an independent function or extension to the executive. Roughly 70% of them do that. I wanted to give a real quick update on Measure U. The proposed budget for PD totals approximately $24 million, and it includes funding to continue all currently authorized programs, as well as augmentations that are highlighted in green. Of the 222.5 authorized positions, the PD anticipates 98% of those full by the beginning of the fiscal year, and 100% by January of 2018. I had previously mentioned kind of my priorities, objectives for the police department, the diversity, the community collaboration, the morale and transparency of the organization. Those are still a priority for our police department. I want to provide a brief overview on three challenges that we're continuing to be faced by the department. The first one is hiring. As of July of 2017, the department estimates that 691 of the department's authorized sworn force will, the department estimates that 691 of the department's authorized sworn force of 761 will be filled. Given the current hiring and attrition needs, trends of the department don't anticipate reaching full strength during the next four years. Currently, the department is only gaining approximately 12 positions per year, 12 officers per year. This, continue with the challenges, the largest contributing factor to the staffing shortages is the uptick in sworn officers leaving the department for other agencies. As you can see by the slide here, if you look at the light blue in the graph, that's for 2015 and 2016, those are the number of people who have left the organization for other departments. And for 2017, the 28 is what we are projecting for this year. In comparison, in 2014, only five officers left the department for other agencies. So like I had mentioned, for this year, we're anticipating, estimating the number to be at 28. The second challenge I want to highlight is the challenge faced by our communication center. The state emergency standard for answering 911 calls is 95% of calls should be answered within 15 seconds. Unfortunately, we're currently averaging about 84%. The inability to answer calls in a timely manner is delaying the acceptance of 911 calls. So when we feel that we can get in a better position to be more within the state compliance, we'd like to take on the additional 911 cell calls. Sacramento, unfortunately, is the only city in the state that does not directly accept cell phone calls. Currently, 70% of our 911 calls originate from cell phones. Currently, our cell calls are routed to SAC PD by the CHP 911's call center. This can unfortunately add approximately as much 40% or three to five minutes of additional time during peak hours. If we were to start accepting cell calls, it would increase our workload by additional 84,000 calls per year. But what we get out of it is a better response time and customer service. We would estimate that we would need approximately 10 additional dispatchers to directly answer cell calls and meet state standards. This estimate has been verified by both internal and external consultant calculations based on nationally-approved staffing formulas for the 911 center. Also, an additional staff would allow the department to explore texting to 911. 50% of the state's 911 centers have deployed text to 911 by the end of this year. They're anticipating up to 50% by the end of this year. The system is simple, it's texting 911, directed to a call dispatcher. A dispatcher will respond like they would on a normal call. Our third challenge has to do with our overtime budget. It hasn't been adjusted or accounted for labor increases in the last 20 years. Currently, the general fund OT budget stands at about $2.1 million. We've historically relied on salary savings to fund the requirement, but the cost of labor increases is becoming a little more difficult for us. The top four drivers of overtime for us are mandatory court overtime, homicide investigations, backfill, and report writing. As the cost of labor continues to rise, the department continues to feel vacancy, it's going to be increasingly more difficult for us to maintain current service levels, basically in our attempts to reduce our overtime expenditures. I'll go into our asset forfeiture master plan. At this time, per city policy, the police department is required to present the city council an annual plan for the expenditure of asset forfeiture funding. Brief definition of what asset forfeiture is. The key to this is it's assets seized involving a criminal investigation determined by a court of law, and by court order, the assets are forfeited. The current city policy on asset forfeiture was approved and updated in 2014. The policy requires compliance with all city, state, and federal laws and guidelines, contains a non-supplanting requirement, requires annual master plan, and an established funding priority. Onto the spending plan. Spending plan for fiscal year 18 totals $712,000, and includes $155,000 for safety equipment, mainly less lethal technology, tasers, technology advancements, $276,000 in specialized programs and investigations, and additional $9,000 just to administer the program. And finally, roughly $81,000 is to support anti-drug and gang programs. In accordance with the state California Health and Safety Code, the $81,000 for anti-drug and gang prevention programs will be used to support programs that help approximately 1,500 youth on an annual basis. Our current partnerships are listed there, the Police Foundation, the Magnet Cadet Program, the Boys and Girls Club, Sacramento Unified School District, Men's Leadership Academy and Gang Prevention Program, COPS and Kids, and the Police Activities League. I do want to point out that the amount of funds available for these programs is less than prior years. The last two years, it was up around $130,000, and right currently, we have $81,000 available to us. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Chief. We'll go to our public comments. We have how many?
About nine, I think.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start with Eric Frame, and then James Clark, Wanda, Timothy Davis, and Braden Murphy.
Hello again. When you cops to start investigating their superiors on an individual basis, it says protect and serve people, right? It's protect and serve the people, I thought. That's what, last time I checked. But you do a little research, a little investigating, because it's like investigating, you'll find that you're not protecting and serving the people, you're protecting and serving someone else, a little higher up, okay? So take that into account. Maybe, yeah, do your own investigating. I'm looking at you guys, but I'm speaking to everyone in the room, and all the cops in the room as well. Do some investigating into who you're serving, why. Ask yourself, why am I taking away these blankets from human beings? Why am I tackling a mentally disabled person? Why am I shooting a mentally disabled person? Why am I tackling someone for walking across the street? Yeah. Ask these questions. Why, 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 why? Do some research. You'll find that, hint, hint, it's a bit of a pyramid scheme, you know? It's a pyramid scheme, and you're not serving the people, unfortunately. I'm sorry. I wish you were. And you still can. There's plenty of time. Just look into it. Make sure your captain's not involved in some giant pedo ring or something, okay? Investigate pedo gate. That goes for everyone. I hear Sacramento's a big hub for pedophilia. Maybe we could ask, ask the former mayor, perhaps, okay? It's a huge hub of pedophilia. And maybe investigate that, put that in the budget. Investigate the pedophilia and the pedo ring that's going on in Sacramento right now. 84 children are missing every hour in America, every hour, okay? And I hear Sacramento's a hub, and I don't doubt it, because we're the capital. So look into that, you know? If you can invest anything, investigate the safety of children, all right? Please.
Thank you, sir.
Human Rights Get Off Your Knees. That's a book you can read also.
James Clark?
So I have some concerns with $223,000 for new cruisers. There seems to be a thing every single time the police budget comes up, is every year, they need new cruisers, new cruisers, brand new, brand new, brand new. And I don't think that's really a necessity at this point, you know? They get it every single budget. I think that needs to be re-analyzed. Also, only $80,000 on the, or $80,000 on the body cameras, which would, I would normally think is a good thing, if the body cameras are actually effective for anything other than the public getting to see that there's no accountability. We've got multiple body cam footage incidents where the cops are not getting anything, and one where they're actually getting medals for killing people, for an incident that they created. You know, I see this as very problematic. And an increase of $1.5 million, I don't think they need that. I really don't. I don't see the problems coming from anything that warrants that. I do see a lot of wasted finance that goes towards defending cops that have killed people, having to deal with the internal investigations of cops that have killed people, rousting the homeless, confiscation of their property through the use of city ordinances. You know, how much of this budget is being used to continually criminalize the homeless and protect cops that are murdering people? How much of it? I'm pretty sure if you stop some of those, they wouldn't need that $1.5 million extra dollars this year. And they still don't need extra new cars. I'm sorry.
Wanda?
I just thought I'd talk on this subject. I know much, don't know much about their finances, but I don't think that people should be getting awards for killing people. I have a problem with that a great deal. Maybe some of this excess of money that's going into the police department would go into the homeless population, and we get them off the street, we won't have to criminalize them, or arrest them, or take their belongings. Or they won't be defecating and urinating on the properties of the downtown area. If we provide the things that they need. It's amazing to me that when we stand up here and ask for the things that we need for these people, that we don't get, we get you guys telling us, yeah, yeah, we're doing something, we're doing something. We have $80 million coming to us, hopefully. But that's still not enough. And do you think these people are homeless because they want to be homeless? You don't think properly, then. We don't need the police out there arresting and taking their belongings. We need them to do the real criminal things, like taking the people that are doing robberies and heavy drug movements and money, and killing one another. Oh, that's right, forgive that. The police kill them too.
Timothy Davis, then Braden Murphy, then Dave Genet, Robert Copeland, and Ron Emsley.
As you consider next year's budget for the city, and specifically for the police department, I ask that you keep in mind the critical state your police department is in today. Despite intensive hiring, the staffing of your police department continues to go backwards. Today, there are 108 vacant sworn positions, as officers continue to leave at an alarming rate. Low salaries and morale are combining to drive officers away. Important decisions the city will make in the next few weeks will determine the direction your police department for the decades to come. Your department has the lowest pay, the highest standards, and is under the largest microscope in the region. Faced with the leadership vacuum, department morale continues to suffer. The SPOA awaits the city's proposal for correcting police officer pay, which today is 25% behind our averages of our comparable agencies, a percentage that continues to increase as negotiated salary increases go into effect in comparable jurisdictions. Just as important to retention is the selection of a police chief to lead this department. The city must select a police chief that can lead the officers in this department. In order to truly lead, a chief must have the trust and the respect of the employees. To what extent the city is willing to do to correct salaries, and who the city selects as our next chief will send a powerful message to your police officers. Your employees are carefully watching this council and this budget process. The omission of additional dispatcher FTEs in the draft budget, after several years of discussion on the critical need to augment dispatcher staffing, has already sent a powerful message to dispatcher that their staffing crisis is not important, and that they can expect no assistance from the council. Your employees are watching and waiting for this council to make these important decisions. I have heard each of you espouse your support for the department and the employees. We now want you to make choices that clearly communicate that support. Thank you.
Braden? Braden?
Oh, sometimes as these meetings go on, I like have to like try not to literally laugh out loud. So, okay, has been, has been repeated many times, homeless people don't have anywhere to go to the bathroom at all, and that's not funny. It's just funny that you guys are elected by the public and you're supposed to be, you're, you're supposed to be smarter people. And I look at this budget, and these increases, 150 million dollars, blah, blah, blah. Let's start with getting the homeless people bathrooms at least as a start. I mean, that just seems like so much common sense. And then the next thing is, when I watched the, when I watched last night's news, they're showing outside the courthouse, the cops having to harass the homeless people and have them leave the area near, near the courthouse. Has been mentioned many times, if we want to be better with this police budget, let's end the anti-camping ordinance, so that cops aren't forced to do something that's completely against human rights, and completely inimoral and embarrassing that we have a city that does this. When I watch the news, and I see homeless people who are struggling, they're, they're already down on their luck as much as they could possibly be, and they're being harassed by the police to leave where they're at. That's unbelievable. It's just so sad and embarrassing to come to these meetings and continue to have it be like this. Money for everywhere, but where we, where we need it right now. We don't have time to wait for the eighty million. Doesn't matter if it's a billion. There's no restrooms for people to go to. I actually feel bad for the police, that they're having to harass the homeless people. That's probably a reason why the police are leaving, because they don't want to have to do something that's inhumane. If, if I got a call from my police chief asking me to go to the courthouse and harass homeless people, I would quit my job. Now, I don't have kids, so I don't have the luxury that these guys do, to be able to quit their job when they're asked to do something inhumane. Let's start with putting it where we need, which is keeping people alive, and let's end the camping ordinance, so the cops can do what they should be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Janay?
Want to use the microphone?
Listen to this young man that reached out to me from home in bed, who'd been about six months. Right, he's right. We don't always get along with the young guys. But you know what? We follow a lot of things in common. All right. Notes. Listen closely, the chief. He watched the man in the room. I'll tell you what, I love Miss Ashley's idea. Do one thing, you better be ready and trained. I'd like you somebody to run the cavity report on how many code-three covers fire calls for, calls for, from our police to protect them in the case of a resistive person that's trying to save a life. We used to laugh about that, because you ever see fire in a turnout gear? They better protect their police. Temptation for the cops, sir. How many more do you have to lose? How many more? You want to fix the 911 problem? What are you going to do when those calls come in here? At 18,000, they'll get lost and transferred to CHP. What are you going to do then? Folks, 21 years, authorized strength, bull, bucky. Authorized means nothing. You could have the 1,200 officers that had decorated, remember this department years ago, who's been here twice and booed while he was here, said you need 1,200 officers. You needed them 20 years ago. Two minutes, and I spend 20 hours a week serving this city. It is a shame. It's an embarrassment that you give a man representing your 722 police officers just two minutes to address the members of his department that protect you and me. How would you like it the next time you dial 911, and an officer knocks on the door, "You got two minutes"?
Thank you, sir.
Robert Copeland?
Well, one, I'd like to see independent audit of the police department, especially the last year on January 2nd, when they raided, right, the rest, when we occupied City Hall. And as far as the police, why don't they go after drug dealers, murderers, gang members, human sex traffickers, instead of the homeless population? I don't see them killing anybody compared to that gang members. They got their priorities at a wrong place. And I'd like to see independent, oversight, review of how the money spent from the police department, not how they want to spend, how we want them to spend their own money. And as far as police shootings, why don't they fire the guys instead of giving them awards? When they killed Joseph Mann and, and anybody else, that was a, let's see them have a real, let's see the people that got beaten up by the police and got killed by police, real justice, instead of the police department getting awards for it. They should be fired.
Last speaker, Ron Emsley.
I'm kind of hard of hearing, so if I say something that's not permissible, could you please speak up? No, seriously. Okay, we have a lot of shootings in Oak Park, and most of them are not solved. I would say maybe 20%. Here's the window blown out. Here's, let's see, a bullet hole, another bullet hole. Let's see, I'm not sure. Maybe one went through this. This was almost in front of the Oak Park Park Post Office, about 12, let's see, 12 or 1 o'clock. This might be a little bit better. It shows all of the glass missing. Let's see. Oh, here's a bullet. Maybe I didn't get that. I tried to circle him. Here's the cops, here's the post office. The police say they can't solve the shootings, because people don't talk. And so, that's just the way it is. We have to live with them. There's about one of these a month. We had one at McClatchy Conception Church, I think. Three people got wounded. They're unsolved, I believe. Another one on 33rd and 6th. One guy got murdered. You know, I hear about Jeff Harris's district, and he has a bad park, and they were able to get police cameras. We don't have the resources to get police cameras in Oak Park. We've been at McClatchy Park. We have the same problems, only worse. The police get very low wages. Why not boogie? You, you don't value them. If I was a cop, I'd leave too. I'd, I'd be insulted. Thank you.
Okay, that completes the, the public testimony. Let's turn it over to the members of the city council. Councilmember Shanier?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick questions for the chief. If you go back to your budget, you had, I think it was 180,000 for Spot Shotter. And I'm wondering, I know we've tried it out in the north area. I don't know if that's just for Meadowview, or if you're looking at Oak Park as well. I mean, we have had, Mr. Emsley's right, quite a few shootings. I also talked to the deputy chief about the potential of working with the county for the area of the county that is, is South Oak Park as well. So I don't know if anything's happened on that.
Yeah, we have some preliminary discussions with the county to see if they want to go in partnership for those areas that we, we border or control, but we haven't actually finalized an agreement yet, or how we're going to proceed with that. But they were, there was some discussions about it. They were interested.
The .18 in your budget of new dollars, was that Meadowview, or what was that for?
The .18 was for the south.
For the south, so Meadowview?
Yes.
So what would it, if we wanted to try to do Oak Park, what, what would that add? Is that another 180,000? Here, we, we have an expert here.
Okay, it's about 210,000 to initiate, 180 to ongoing costs.
So, we haven't initiated in the south area yet, though, right?
Yes, it is. It actually is operational now, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, gang activity in the Oak Park area has risen. We have, we have major problems there with shootings. I think we've had as many. I don't know if we're rivaling Del Paso now, but hopefully, none of us get there. So I'd like to ask the consideration of the council as we go forward, or, Chief, if there's ways within your budget that we could talk about bringing Spot Shotter, and if we could work something out with the county. I know the, the area of the county that juts into the city is probably the worst that we have on that right now, so maybe we can get some cooperation there. And I'm happy to reach out to the board of supervisors representative for that area, which would be Phil Cerna, to see if he might be willing to have that discussion as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask Captain Beasley, who has that area, to reach back out to the county to see where we're at with that.
Okay, that would be great. I appreciate it. And maybe if we could get a report back when this comes back to the council, that would be terrific.
Chief, in line with that thinking, too, we've had a number of shootings in the areas where there's the illegal marijuana neighborhood grows. I'd like to look at, in, in conjunction with that, and we had that demo homicide recently, in that, the southeast area. And I know when we talk about the south area, talk about Meadowview, but we don't really consider, you know, the, the impacts to the southeast area, particularly where all the illegal marijuana grows are at. So in that development, when we're bringing it back, I'd like to see, you know, in comparison, what, how to address that.
Maybe they have a two-for-one deal on it.
Okay.
So if we can put that on the list. The other, two other items. One is, this is very different than that, is, you know, when we do events in our districts, and we need police cooperation either to close off streets, or whatever that looks like, there's a pretty significant cost to that, which is either borne by whatever organization is doing it, or a lot of times, I assume, my colleagues will pick it up as well. I'm wondering, Mr. City Manager, if we could get a report back on that, and what we, what that looks like in total for a year. How much we're reimbursing the police force, and to see if there's something we can do, because it's pretty expensive, and we really want community involvement, community engagement in a lot of these areas. And a lot of times, that cost can be prohibitive. We're talking about a parade down Franklin Boulevard, and getting police cooperation and help on that. I, I don't know if these folks are already on the clock, and we're just moving them somewhere else, or that's all overtime. But I'd like to get a better understanding of how you charge for that, why you charge for that, and if there's something that we can do. Maybe there's some allotment we can get per district, save everybody a lot of money, and really encourage the community events.
We, we can look at that. It depends on the event, and, and as events occur year after year, we kind of evaluate, you know, the, the resources that we had to commit to that event. It's sometimes a combination of using the, the backfill of the Supplemental Employment Program, where we actually charge vendor, or organizations to, to help fund it. Sometimes we use on-duty resources, and sometimes we change the, the specialty units assignments in terms of to facilitate that, too, so.
Well, and we, we, as you can imagine, we get lots of calls from folks. They don't understand that the council office is then paying for it. And maybe there's different ways we could help them think through their events, where we're using on-duty police officers rather than having to bring in extras to cut the costs and things like that. So I think that would be, it'd be a nice community engagement piece.
Sometimes, too, it depends on the duration of the event. If, if it's a long duration of, then obviously it's going to, you're going to be pulling a car, too.
Like a five-hour bike ride on Saturday.
Yeah, so.
The longest 30 miles of my life. And then finally, and this is actually on item 17, I just have a, a request, and this is around the asset seizure fund. And I know you have 81,000 going to anti-gang and kind of youth activities, which I think is great. Two comment, or one comment, and then as we get to a final budget, I'd like to make a request or provide some direction. One is, I just want to note that the 81,000 is a minimum. It's not a maximum. So if the department chose, there's a 15% minimum by law.
15%, yes.
So when you say only 81,000 was available, that's not quite right. You, 81,000 is the 15%. The department could choose to spend.
That's what we proposed, yes.
But I just want to be clear on that. But what I'd like to do is, is this, and we had some of this discussion this afternoon. We, we are looking at creating a Department of Youth Services, or Youth and Human Services, whatever the name is going to be. Part of that is a framework for how we work with young people. I understand, and I think it's a really good piece, that the police are doing these programs to give young people a different look at police and create relationships. I'm 100% in favor of that. My request, or, or if we could provide direction, would be that, as we get that going, that whoever's running the programs for you, meet with the people in the department to, one, look at what the frameworks are that we're going to be using around youth, so we get a good youth development component into the programs that you're running. And, two, if, really, which I believe the, the goal here is to get relationships going between young people and police officers, which, again, I think is a very valuable thing, that we look at police officers not only participating in programs through this fund, but in programs generally. We have lots of youth programs across the city, so there's no necessity that the only place you guys are working is within this 81,000. We've got tons of programs, and I'd love to see, and I think it would be a good thing, and meet the goals, as I understand them, of the, of the department, for police to participate in those programs as well. So what I would love to see is, assuming this thing kicks in in July or August, as that happens, by December, you've had those conversations, and kind of at mid-year, that when we come back with mid-year, there's a report back on how you all are cooperating with the department and the work that we're doing there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say, Chief, I, I, every budget year, I have a particular set of frustrations and opportunities I try to address. And I think today, one of the things that I want to come back to, I don't think we've ever truly analyzed, is the cost of, the cost impact to the police department of demonstrations related to the state. And, and, you know, the state doesn't pay property taxes, they don't pay sales taxes. We love having them. We want state employees downtown. But particularly in the last couple of years, it seems like we've had a lot more responsibility, particularly when CHP didn't staff up for what happened at the Capitol related to the anarchists and the Arians. We had 100 officers at the Capitol, and CHP had about four. And I, I think it just reminds me that I think they're relying on us heavily to do their work, but they're not reimbursing us. So just as Councilmember Shanier talks about, you know, what we might charge community groups, it, it's a perennial frustration that, and maybe our, our state delegation can help us with, but whether or not we can get some reimbursement if we can show actual costs. I know that's a fun one, because it always comes up. The other thing where we've made progress is around community-oriented policing, or POP. I, I don't believe yet that this budget gets us, you know, in mid-year, we, we talked about some POP work, but I continue to hear in the community. I think it's relative to some of the frustrations we hear every week, some things we've heard in, in communities of color. The relationship between the department and communities isn't as strong as it used to be, because we don't have people in the community on a daily basis building those. We rotate officers, which I think is a good practice from BEAT. And I don't, I don't offer this endorsement of POP or community-oriented policing as a indirect criticism, because I, I don't mean it that way. But I do believe that we will be a stronger city if we have our officers, especially when things get really serious, and they have relationships in the particular communities where trust is complicated to build. And, and this particular budget, I don't think gets us to where we need to go around our POP program. And as we look to staff up, and I know there's a graduation in June, looked like a healthy list of officers, hopefully, that we, that we look to really restore that program, not just in the minimal way that we did at mid-year, which I don't want to also criticize that, because that was a start, but that was a taste, an appetizer. Now it's time for the main course, so to speak, when it comes to that program. I think the department's practices continue to innovate and continue to evolve. I agree with Councilmember Shanier about Shot Spotter. I think that's an excellent use of new technology to help communities that have been really struggling with crime, particularly gun violence, which is one of the worst forms of violent crime in our city. But also, I think, the rollout of cameras, the rollout of a better real-time crime center, integrating regional integrating regional transit and other partners in, is a great symbol of our commitment to, towards doing, doing more with what we have. And that brings me to sort of my final, sort of piece on this, which is that during the recession, we, we cut two hundred officers, we asked people to do a lot more with a lot less, crime rates stayed low and went lower, and I think that we can only push the department so far, so fast, so hard, before that wear and tear shows. And I think one of the things that's become clear in the last year, is that wear and tear on the department is showing through officers leaving for better pay and less work in other jurisdictions. And, you know, I don't think we have our head in the sand about that. I think, you know, the mayor will probably say something after this, I know my colleagues will. I don't think that we're naive about our challenge there, we want to surmount that challenge. We believe that our best officers are the ones that are being recruited away.
Right.
They're also our youngest officers sometimes, and those are our future. And if we lose our younger officers, especially the ones who've just gone through academy, or we work really hard to recruit because they're diverse, or women, I think that sets our department back even more, because as we face retirements, which we know we've had those as well, we need to replenish our ranks as effectively as we can. And so, while, while the dialogue in this chamber has descended too often into insensitivity, and particularly, I think, maligning the whole force, I think that the criticisms are appropriate when we've done something wrong, and when the, when we can be better. And I respect that our officers are mature professionals who are open to that feedback, because we all make mistakes. But I think as a department, we have a department that has a commitment to keeping our city safe, we have a department that's committed to best practices, we have a department that wants to ensure that the future of the city is secure. And the future of that city is every day when people decide where they're going to live, where they're going to invest, where they're going to keep their kids, and we want Sacramento to be that choice. The city of Sacramento and our region has a chance to always be that choice. And so if I have one message here today, and Tim, I want you to bring this back to your officers too, because I don't always think we have an effective way to communicate directly through you to them, and sometimes it's too negative on both sides, that we need to use this budget as an opportunity, especially as we go into negotiations, to set a tone that's constructive, that's civil, but that shows that we want the best, the brightest, and the most dedicated officers here, to help us face these challenges together. And in the end, this council, and, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I'll speak for myself, I believe that we are ready, willing, and able to do everything we can to show them this is the place they should be loyal to, this is the place that will treat them well, but also, this is the place that will hold them to high standards, just like the public holds us to. And hopefully with that trust, we can create the best police force in the region and in the state. And I do believe that Sacramento has an opportunity to continue to lead on all those fronts. So I know that there's a lot of moving parts, but I think this budget can do somewhat more around the problem-oriented policing. But I think in the end, we have to use these opportunities. A budget is a statement of values. Councilmember Shenier, you've said this over and over again, that the, the budget is reflective of what we believe. And a hundred and thirty-three million dollars of our general fund going into this department is a strong vote of confidence, whether that's enough people or enough pay. I think we should have those conversations, and we will, but I think that that is a testament to our valuing of public safety as a top priority for the city. Not the only priority, but one of our top priorities. So I appreciate you and your team and the work. I know that was long, but I rarely get a chance to say something like that, and I just really felt strongly that this was the time and place to do it.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple things, if you could help me pull them out a little bit from your presentation. First of all, ShotSpotter, or as Councilmember Shenier says, Spotshooter, I don't know which, ShotSpotter, right? Yeah, ShotSpotter. You heard him right, that's funny. So I think it's a really great program, it's worked in the north area really well. One thing it does, it's not in my area, but when you are in adjacent district, it does free officers up. So if they don't have to go out to calls that are fireworks, or calls that are not shots fired when somebody calls and says it is, it's a, you know, car that backfired or something, it frees up the officers to then be on patrol or wherever they were going in the other part of the community. So every district might not need ShotSpotter, but we all benefit for where, for the more places that it is in the city. So I would just encourage you to look at it as, it does have citywide benefits even when we put it into particular corners of the community, and then, you know, it may move around a little bit on us where we need that to be, and hopefully the company would be willing to work with us on some of that, if we need to move things around a bit. I do know there's technology involved, I know it's a good program. Captain Rizley did a really wonderful job of maximizing its capacity in the north area when he was out there. So just want to make sure that I'm supportive of that. And then, the traffic officers, I know we, in the past, have always been really reliant on grants. Is there any opportunity for us to increase our traffic component, you know, the stop signs, and speeding, and just keeping people safe in the communities with prevention on traffic component? Is there an increase for you, or an idea on that?
Not currently, because the biggest challenge we have is that whole retention issue. When I know, I get the fully measures, I'm fully committed to increasing our POP presence, but all that is, we need to address the retention, so that way, as we rebuild the organization with staffing, we can commit additional resources, whether it's to, to traffic, or POP, or IMPACT, those types of things. Those are all important programs.
And it doesn't have to be in this budget, I don't need to add more budget priorities to you, but I think it's something that in the long run, and when we look at the Police Department for the future, it's really something we need to address, and part of it is what Councilmember Hanson talked about, about being the capital city, and the number of events we have to cover, and just having those traffic officers. And I know in the past, I've been here long enough, that when grant funding runs out, we lose the whole division sometimes, and just don't want to see that happen. It's a really great preventative tool, it is something that I think works well in the city of Sacramento, and it has real ramifications for people that live here. In cities like Fresno, that have a larger traffic presence, the collisions are fewer, the auto break-ins are fewer, and guess what, everybody's insurance, automobile insurance is lower, because those numbers are lower. So if there's a way we can just have a plan in the out-years to get there, I don't think it's ever something we'll be able to just do one year, add, you know, a bunch of traffic, but if there's a way we could get to prioritizing that and see what the benefits are back to our communities, I think it's worth looking at. And my understanding is that Fresno does have a good model on that program. On POPs, which is one way to call it, but the other way is community-oriented policing, that we're all, you know, we're very grateful, within your first few weeks of becoming the interim chief, you brought us a few community-oriented policing officers, and I just want to echo Councilmember Hanson's comments there, and really, it's been a recurring theme on this council dais for a long time, that that is the type of policing we really want to support. And from an officer's standpoint, at least the officers that I've had the opportunity to work with, it's something they really enjoy, they get to know people, you know, and they, because I think sometimes being an officer is really hard, if you're always dealing with negative calls, and always dealing with a situation that is a problem, sometimes you don't get to meet the people who are really working hard to improve the community, really care, really grateful that you're out there. So the problem-oriented policing, or the community-oriented policing, allows these officers to get to know kids at the school, and the principals, and the neighborhood association presidents, and stuff like that. I think that's a really important component in this city at this time. So I would also encourage you, over the, this budget and the next budget in mid-year, to really look at how we grow that model, just with our existing resources, how we allocate more of our officers to do community-oriented policing as opposed to something else. And then, the, I think Councilmember Harris will probably talk about this, because I've heard him talk about it before, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I want to support him in the idea that the IMPACT teams need to just expand more and be more available, and they really do seem to be working. As you probably heard me mention, I'd like to see them integrate in with fire, and give fire a type of emergency medical response, our firefighters that are on the ambulances, a partnership that they could be working on, and maybe piloting it in the urban core, but eventually getting it out to the neighborhoods too. So I want to support him in, in his, long time, he's been working on that. I agree, City Manager's comments more for you, that the chief selection needs to happen, and is very important to stabilizing the department and the membership. But I just also want to remind folks, that's not a decision of the mayor and council, it is a decision of the city manager. It's not something that the council is engaged in. So we don't select the chief of police, we don't, we don't take a vote on it, that is the selection of the city manager. But I want to encourage city manager, I know the application pool has closed, and so you have applicants, maybe you would be able to give us a timeframe on what you, when you think we might have that information, whenever you think that's appropriate, this week or next, to tell us, give us an update on that, I think would help, because I do think that people are watching, particularly community members, community activists, people who work with the Police Department, and the police officers themselves, to see how, how quickly are we moving to bring in a chief, and what sort of characteristics do we value in that chief. So maybe you can help us with that, city manager, in keeping that dialogue going. And then, I, I just want to say, I for one, well, one thing first, Chief, I asked back at a budget and audit committee meeting, and the mayor was very supportive, for you to help me, and Fire Department, so Chief White, to help me start to establish the first Public Safety Academy inside of a high school, so we could sort of pipeline kids in high school through a joint police-fire program. And I wanted to just report back to you, thank you, both of you, for sending your resources. Those meetings, Mayor, have started, and Atomas Unified is fully prepared to be a partner, and we have a target date of fall 2018 to launch that program. We did meet with the folks from the state, and they did tell us it would be the first in the state, and they were very excited about it. It may require some funding from the city, maybe more just like resources and allocation of officers and firefighters. We wouldn't need to do it this year, but I want to put it on your radar for fall 2018, yeah, next year's budget, and it's an important program, you're already, you already have your respective chiefs, or captains, or DCs, or whatever, working on that project, and it is moving quickly, and it looks like it's going to be a great deal over there at Endercombe High School. And then, I just, I want to say that, I, I am, as one council member, who I truly believe that public safety is the reason that the city governance exists, keeping people safe, and whatever that means, and it's a lot of things. Sometimes it's parks programs, sometimes it's youth programs, sometimes it's police officers, sometimes it's firefighters or paramedics, but it's always about making sure people in the city are safe. And we have lots of room to improve, I don't think anybody up here disputes that. But it bothers me a lot that the morale of our Police Department is so low, and it bothers me that we have such a tremendous retention problem. I know of one neighboring jurisdiction that has fifteen of our officers in backgrounds right now. So while I don't quite agree that the best and brightest are the only ones leaving, are the ones leaving, I think we have some great officers that are very committed to Sacramento, and want to stay here, and are really hoping that we will find a way to value them and show them that we appreciate them. I also don't want to lose the talent that we continue to lose. You know, I think we were working hard on accountability and oversight in these commissions and committees, that it is just as important to make sure that good officers know that they're appreciated, and I'd like to give an example of that, because these things, you know, get overlooked sometimes. Last week, there were a few members here of the community that advocates for the homelessness, for the homeless, that asked me for some help with a woman who really was in great need of help. She had her little son here with her, and, you know, it was my daughter's birthday, so I left early, but before I left, I stopped and talked to her, and I stopped to some of her very able advocates, and we were able to get her into a solution. I didn't do it, Norm Leong did it, a captain in the Police Department, that's who did that. All I did was go get him, and talk to him, he made the phone calls, he got her into a very safe place, he made sure that she's there, and, and he even followed up with me a few days later, to make sure that I knew that she was safe, and that that program was moving forward. And I just think, you know, it's just as important to make sure that when somebody does something we don't like, that we mention it, that when somebody does something that we do, that we put that at the forefront of the conversation too. And if we want to keep Norm Leong, who I, I very much do, then we need to make sure that he knows that we appreciate him, and the other officers like him, who go the extra mile to try to make sure that people are safe, and that doesn't always mean an arrest. Sometimes it means a phone call and a hotel voucher. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is set the record straight about pod cameras in parks. Those weren't paid for by the police, that was actually funded through a CIP that I had from Parks, so it was a collaboration of Parks. The money actually came from development impact fees, but working with the police and working with SMD and our Parks Department, we were able to deploy those cameras in the public park for the first time. This is going to be a great resource for PD, I believe. It'll free up resources so that you only respond to that area, which is a little hard to get to, when there's need, and you'll know that from the real-time crime center. It's a very valuable tool, and I would suggest to my colleagues that it's possible to put those in other public parks, and you might consider it. I'd like to piggyback a little bit on the comments of Councilmember Hanson about trust. Mr. Davis, you and I talked about this at length this afternoon, and I believe that it's very important for SPOA and management to get on the same page, as far as telling the story of the successes of PD. We're not getting our story out there about what it's actually like to be a police officer, what is encountered, why actions are taken, and so I really believe that public sentiment is skewed in the wrong direction currently, and that we can tell that story better, and I would urge you to, to get together and start talking about and collaborating on ideas to rebuild that trust with PD and the community, because that is an essential piece, and that's why we keep coming back to community-oriented policing, or POPs officers, because that is a bridge, and that bridge needs to be rebuilt. Councilmember Ashby, I'm very supportive of your, of your Public Safety Academy and USD, and I hope to have a conversation with you about piggybacking at Atomas High, because I think it's a really valuable idea. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the IMPACT team, and I, and I've sung their praises numerous times, it's a very high-budget priority to me to get seven-day IMPACT team. So my request to you, Chief, is to provide figures to the manager before our next meeting of the actual cost of going to seven-day IMPACT. So that'll probably mean another full team. I've talked about the figures with Mr. Galliano, but I'd like to have it, official numbers, so that we can speak about this with real numbers when we talk about budget priorities next week. The IMPACT team is incredibly resourceful, they've been very dynamic in helping with numerous issues with homeless, helping solve problems for people who are on the street, as well as solving crime issues and mental health issues. I mean, they're very dynamic, so highly supportive. If you could provide those figures, I'd be very appreciative.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things I just want to have a conversation about, and one of them is the criminal justice academies. And I don't know if you have all the information tonight, and so, you know, I think at some point in time, it would be good to get a report back to the council on what's the impact of the criminal justice academies. Are there still four of them that exist in the city of Sacramento?
Yeah, we still, they still meet, I have a deputy chief that goes to the meetings, so I'll have to get an update.
Right. So I'm looking at a report online that says that in the 2015-2016 report, there were five hundred and forty-four students that participated in the criminal justice academies in those four schools. And so I'm just kind of wondering, over the years, what number of those kids come into our police force and actually start becoming officers, serving and protecting? That's, that's one question I have. And then the other question is, much like the mayor's thousand-strong, do we need to try to create some form of an internship program that allows them to come into the police force and get an early watch as to what it is that it's all about?
Can I just on that real quick?
Please, please. Please, please.
I was going to ask, ask the same thing of the fire chief. I'd love it if both the police department and the fire chief participated in Thousand Strong and actually hired some of our Sacramento students, juniors going into their senior years, for exactly the kind of experiences that you just described.
Vice Mayor, I think I misunderstood you. I thought you said criminal justice cabinet. You said criminal justice magnet academies, what you're referring to?
I'm talking about the ones at Johnson, Grant, Kennedy and McClatchy?
Yes. I'm sorry, I thought you said criminal justice cabinet, which is a different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. So, yes, we do still have those programs running in place and they are. Actually, until we developed the pipeline hiring program, that actually was a big mechanism for us to stay connected with them. Because what we found out is as they went off to college, we lost connection with them. After four years of having, building that relationship with them, we lost connectivity with them. So one of the things that pipeline hiring program has brought us, that is if they stay local, we can employ them as student trainees, we can employ them as reserve CSO. So that actually, that mechanism is helping with our keeping in contact with those young individuals.
But I would even say that you should come back to us and say, if we had resources to be able to not only look at the ones that stay local, but the ones who go away to school and be able to stay in contact with them, the investment that we've made in the years that they've been in high school and the investment that we make as they go into college, that investment, I think, will pay dividends with them coming back into the city of Sacramento.
Absolutely.
And so I just, I think it's important to understand first, a baseline of what kind of numbers are we getting as a result of the program and kids that are staying here locally in Sacramento, going to school, going away to school, coming back and then moving into our police force. And then I just wanted to kind of put the internship opportunity out there as well. And then the second thing is on the links to law enforcement. And I know we have three community-based organizations that are working hard with not only the police department, but with other law enforcement officials as well to make sure that they help us to hire into our police, into our departments. And so I just want to also kind of get an idea of what's the effectiveness of those programs? And is there an opportunity, if in fact we see an impact, to grow those programs beyond the three nonprofits that are working with us right now?
Yes, so far, it sounds very promising. What we're seeing is part of the program is to use the community-based organizations to help us do the recruitment aspect, to reach out there to those individuals that we may or may not have contact with. And then the program itself is designed to take the mystery out of the process. Unless you know somebody that's gone through the process, you don't really know what to expect, or more importantly, how to prepare yourself, to make yourself marketable, to be successful. With that, it's beyond the six-week program. It's a, it's a, it's a relationship that we established that's going to continue well beyond six weeks because we want to see not only that they get hired or successful in the process, but they're successful in the agencies that they get hired with. So so far preliminary is very, I think is very successful. I was at the very first cohort with the API cohort and then we branched off to develop within the Latino cohort and the African-American cohort.
The African-American.
Yes, absolutely.
So I think especially with our lack of diversity that we have, this is a great opportunity to go beyond what they're doing right now. I mean, I think we should take a look at, if it's a successful program and we're retaining some of those individuals who are going through that six-week program, it's almost like a six-week interview. They get to learn about us, we get to learn about them. If it's successful, why wouldn't we duplicate it and do more of it?
Absolutely. It's just a matter of, the challenge is finding people who are interested or to get people to may not have ever thought about a career in public safety, but actually to get them that, no, this is a rewarding career that you should, we encourage you to get involved in.
Right. But the good thing is you have community-based organizations that are out there doing that recruiting for you. And then you're actually coming in as a part of the six-week program to help those individuals learn more about the departments and law enforcement. So I just, I think it's a, I'd like to first understand, are we seeing officers come into our law enforcement as a result of it? And if it's something that we're getting the result? And the reason I'm asking the question is because you said, I think in your slide, you said it's going to take four years for us to get to where we need to get to.
That's just, yeah, to get us to our full-time equivalent, yes.
Okay. So what I'm trying to do is, is take a look at two strategies that I know we have in Sacramento in order to get that from four years to two years or one year or less. And I'm just looking at those ideas as, are we exhausting, are we taking advantage of the opportunities that we have right in front of our face or are we not doing that? So I just want to put that on the table. I'd like to get back a report as to what the impact, what has happened so far with those two strategies. And then let's see if in fact we can invest a little bit more in making them more fruitful.
Okay.
Good. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Getta?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know it's been a long night, so I'll go here quickly. Couple of thank yous. Thank you for, Chief, and the department for your work. You're a good hornet, so I like your law enforcement candidate scholars program with Sac State. I think we're recruiting a lot of, it doesn't matter which hand, you know, you know. But the, it does matter which finger. But I know we have a lot of alums that have come from that program and I'm glad that we're working with our faculty members out there and we're getting a lot of diverse candidates from that. And that, I think, is the direct feeder to improve our diversity hire and equity hire in our department. Second, on the Shot Spotter piece, again, you know, we've had a string of shootings that have happened in the South area due to some of the illegal marijuana grows and some of the home invasion issues. I'd like to figure out how we can look at budgeting in that, to look at the Southeast area. Also with that, the pods, both with the Power and Alliance and the Stockton Boulevard partnership to look at the license plate readers and cameras on those areas, working with the PBIDs. I appreciate that. But I think we need to look at, how do we do, use one-time dollars for that type of infrastructure allocation? Maybe we can work with finance on looking at, hey, let's figure out, how do we use one-time money to get some capital in technology that has helped us track down some folks? I mean, I know the pod on Stockton and Fruit Ridge has helped tremendously on a number of cases and same thing with the one on Power Inn. And there are some gaps, at least from touring the facility, the, over on Richards, where we were some, where pods could be helpful. At least that's what I've heard from your officers. So on the, on the issue of hiring for the cannabis officer enforcement and those, what do you see as the timeframe of being able to hire up and ramp up for those specific positions?
The initial rollout of our implementation of the program, we're going to be using some overtime to get that program up and running, but we're hoping to get that program going in the next, as we continue to fill officers and get some positions filled.
Sure.
But we're hoping to do it soon, though, it's just because it's.
Well, here's what I'd like to, I'd like to recommend, and I don't know where the council feels on this, but I think it's imperative that we, I know the full implementation of the 12 officers is phased in. But I'd like to look at maybe a conversation with both, when we, when we have code enforcement up here in Carl Simpson and your department, look at how do we front-load the hiring of those officers and code enforcement team and the sergeant and in that area to make sure that we're prepped and ready on enforcement on the cannabis program early on. And I know we have an expectation of, we can guesstimate, I guess, how many permit fees we might get. So I'd like to figure out, can we front-load that program and be fully enforced? I'd like to figure out where that is because it is a pay-as-you-go program. So we've already collected, yeah, I think Councilmember Chenier brought it up, we've already collected a bunch of money, so.
No, we've collected about $180,000 in fees.
Collected a hundred and eighty.
So all the fees that we've collected thus far that are substantial are on the CUP side and so they pay for the CUP portion. And one of the things that you're going to see, I was actually going to talk about this when we talked about cannabis revenue next week, we're going to be bringing forward a report to do some cleanup on the program and on the multi-year operating project that will take in the revenues and expenditures associated with it. And what we're going to ask council for is the opportunity to spend any additional BOT revenues that are received above budget to pay simply for the staff that we already have onboard. And then we will have to take into consideration, if the fees don't materialize over the 18 fiscal year, that same authority to use cannabis-related BOT to pay for the staffing to make sure that we can have that robust enforcement. But thus far, we haven't seen the permit fees materialize yet. We just don't have that volume of applications on the operating permit side. And so we do want to start to begin to put that enforcement model into place, but unfortunately, we're going to need to look for an alternate funding source for a time.
Well, I'd like to figure out, I'd like to explore that further because I want to make sure we're ramped up completely on the enforcement side on this, both on the law enforcement side and the code enforcement side when it comes to illegal marijuana grows. The other issue with that, associated with that, and I know, I think, oh, Chief White is still there. Thank you, Chief White, for your support of the county ordinance on the butane and going after the honey oil illegal manufacturing of those labs. And so I'd like to figure out how we can include that enforcement piece also for our city and move quickly on an ordinance so we can go after some of the fires that occurred due to illegal manufacturing through butane in residential home communities. Lastly, again, on the, I think Councilmember Chenier made a good point. I mean, we have the Latino Heritage Parade on Franklin Boulevard, we have the Tet Festival and Little Saigon Parade on Stockton Boulevard. And a lot of the communities don't have a lot of resources to block off those streets. I know we have a lot of events in Councilmember Hanson's district, so I think we have to figure out, how do we make, if we really want more eyes on the street in some of these streets, if we want more activity, more walkability, we have to figure out, how does that piece overlay into the issue of public safety and community development? That's all I have. I want to say, thank you for your officers. They've done a tremendous amount of work in my council district on the issue of home invasions and also the illegal marijuana grows. And the work with your community has shown progress. I want to make sure they know that, that people feel that that's been positive out there. And I know we have challenges still in that area, but the fact that they've been able to respond quickly to issues and then be available for all the community neighborhood associations from Glen Elder, Avondale, up to Tahoe Park and in the North Aryan College Greens, we greatly appreciate your officers' work in that area. Thank you very much, Chief, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Getta. So final comments here. I want to thank you as well, Chief, you and your department. You have a hard job and you do it with great professionalism and integrity. I want to just limit my comments to two big, two sort of big-picture issues, if I might. My colleagues did a very good job, I think, going through a lot of detail. But in my view, the issues of recruitment, retention, pay, neighborhood policing and trust all go together. And I hope that we, as we are engaging across the table with the SPOA and as we are considering this budget and future budgets, that we keep those connections together. Councilmembers Hanson and Ashby and others mentioned community policing. And I was asked the other day about some of the continuing national controversies about the relationship between the police department and communities of color. And the lines drawn are very clear. The police department says, and I was quoted saying this on the radio, so I'll say it again, but police department says, and police officers say, that if there's a disproportionate amount of crime in a particular area that allegedly is committed by one race or ethnicity, that it's perfectly permissible to stop somebody with some suspicion because whether or not they're the culprit, that may lead to solving the crime. The communities of color, on the other hand, especially the African-American community, say, well, that's profiling because if I'm stopped and because I look a certain way, but I'm not guilty of anything, then you're stopping me unfairly. And so how to bridge that divide, aside from standing in one another's shoes and trying to understand one another better, the only answer to me is bringing back genuine neighborhood policing to our city. And I think community policing, frankly, may be the wrong term because it's too broad and it implies too much. Because as much as we laud the POP program, I've said this, I want to say it again, POP is a wonderful community policing strategy, but it's only part of community policing. It was a component of what we had in the 1990s when I was on the city council, when we actually had neighborhood police officers, named officers who were assigned to communities and neighborhoods and all over the place. And yes, there were a lot of federal grants and yes, there was other special funding. But the reason why I believe that's the answer is because when the police officers know the community and know the neighbors and know the people, then they don't have to stop everybody. They know the difference between the person who may be the parolee who they need to check up on and stop versus the guy who has no criminal record, who's walking home from work. And until we commit ourselves budgetarily, including pay, recruitment and retention, to that philosophy and that strategy, we're going to continue to have this struggle. And so I hope that as we report back and we discuss these issues farther, that we can have a council workshop about what neighborhood policing is really about. Because my frame of reference is a little different. I don't think we have it today, even with POP. How we get there, when we're down 100 officers still from the height of the recession, we're adding 15 a year? Is that enough? Is that fast enough? Can we accommodate greater growth? Can we apply more aggressively for grants? But this is where we need to get to. And then there's the issue of trust itself. And this has been a major theme. And certainly, a lot of the discussion's been centered on the city's and the council's video release policy, which I support, even though I was not on the council when this item passed. But I want to make a suggestion and ask us all to think about this. I don't know that it requires a change in formal policy, but I want to put the thought out there. I was going to put it out in writing later this week, but I think now is the appropriate time. I would like us to consider dramatically expanding the video release practice here in our city. Now, I know there are issues of privacy that would need to be worked through for the, you know, for people who have an interaction with the law enforcement officer, who may not want to be known and seen on video. But I would like us to consider, to consider uploading as much video as possible, everyday interactions, incidents that occur where the police officer acted in the right, that doesn't involve necessarily a shooting. The city of Seattle experimented with this and certainly with technology and YouTube, you can upload as much video as you want. If we really want to be transparent and really want to allow the press, the public, the police community, the neighborhoods, to be able to see what the daily interaction and the daily activities are and the way our police department works, why not put it out there for people to see? Understanding that we've got to deal with, again, privacy issues from the residents in the community. But the police have complained, the SPOA and the rank and file officer, I think have rightly complained, that with our current video release policy, the only thing that the public sees is the controversial shooting. Well, there's a lot more to see. Some of the stories have been told here, you know, tonight. And then there may be some practices that we see that ought to be changed or officers who ought to be told they need to act differently. But transparency is transparency. And we have the technology now to be able to actually do more than what And we have the technology now to be able to actually do more than what we're doing in a way that I think could bridge some of the trust gap that we hear so much about. I've talked to Tim about this privately, and, you know, this is not a surprise to you, Tim, but it is something that I thought would be appropriate to raise tonight and something that we ought to consider. Thank you. That's that item, that's this item. Appreciate it, Chief. Report back on, in a couple of weeks. Okay, that's the, that's the council agenda for the evening. Is there anything, any, any members want to add anything? We do have comments by council members. Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, Mr. Manager, I'd like to offer a little direction. I, I need some help with the micropad housing as a dwelling model to pursue for, for meeting the homeless needs in our community. We're already working on code issues, but I'm going to need help with negotiation of pricing and citing possibilities to make this model viable, so I'm requesting your help with moving the micropad forward. The Natomas Community Association meets this Thursday, May 18th, at 6:30 PM at the South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road. The same night, Thursday, River Park Neighborhood Association meets 7:30 at Fremont Presbyterian, Presbyterian Church, room E210, that's at 5770 Carlson Drive. And this Friday, we have hotspots at Rio Tera Junior High.
Okay, Councilman Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an exciting event this Sunday, actually two of them. Is that loud enough?
If we could, please take the conversations outside, we appreciate it.
Councilmember Ashby, please wake up. She is. We have two exciting events this weekend, one that is annual, but one that's a first time. So we've long talked about doing what's called a Ciclovia in Sacramento, which is where you close the street and you open it for the public to use to do all sorts of things. And so Broadway this Sunday from 8:00 AM to noon, the details are on the city website, I won't bore you with the exact, but there will be yoga, there will be dancing, there will be free test rides on our new bike share program preview. Get, get your appetite wet for that. The bike share launches in our preview this Thursday. But Sunday Streets, it's called, and it'll be on Broadway. Should be a lot of fun, it crosses from District 4 into District 5. And I personally want to thank Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, who, who did a lot of work on this. Councilmember Chenier, we did work collaboratively with the police department on the route to minimize costs and on the closures, so you'll be happy to know, we minimized costs. Matt Reed from my office worked with some sponsors, so I want to thank the Air District, Secog, Union Pacific, the Realtors, the people who helped cover some of our costs, because, you know, the city doesn't pay for things like that usually. But it's going to be a lot of fun and I hope to see some of you out there doing whatever it is you do with your families that, that will make it exciting. We also have Taste of Land Park on Sunday afternoon from 4:00 to 7:00. Should be a beautiful day, we'll be out on one of the leafy covered streets and lots of local restaurants, little tastes here and there. If you want to come as my guest, let me know and we'll, we'll make sure you get covered.
Thank you. Eric?
All right. Let's see, what do we got here? Full of events this, but before we get to events, wanted to get an update on the butane ordinance, making sure that we're moving quickly on that piece so that when it goes into effect, we got, we have both city and county jurisdictions, so people aren't hopping over to the other side of Stockton Boulevard on the, to purchase butane. Okay, this is a busy weekend for folks. So, starting off at 8:30 AM this Saturday, May 20th, Keep Stockton Boulevard Clean, it's a community event with the Stockton Boulevard Partnership and all our neighborhood associations to address the litter, reporting illegal dumping and removing of shopping carts and looking at, how do we improve our, our area on Stockton Boulevard? Encourage everyone to come out and support that effort, that's 8:30 to noon this Saturday. Then at, right after that, if, you know, get a little, build up a little hunger, come out and support our local PTA, the Tahoe Park Pancake Breakfast at the Tahoe Elementary School in the cafeteria. It's a way to help out our, our little PTA there to help them buy books and every, all the resources for the, for the students there at Tahoe Elementary. District 6 Mobile Office Hours and also the Fire Station 10 Open House is on Saturday, May 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00. So come out and meet your firefighters, learn about fire safety, well, there'll be an opportunity to tour the fire station and learn about what firefighters do in your area over off of the Fire Station 10, which is off of Fruit Ridge and I think it's 67th, if I'm correct. Also then, moving on to Wednesday, May 24th, we have our Tahoe Park Town Hall, where the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association will also be voting on their board members, annual board member election. But we're also going to have all of the, the department heads and, and staff from different agencies to answer questions about things from solid waste to water meters to parks. Everyone's going to be there, kind of in a, in a, in a community fair type of activity to get your direct question answered. So come out to, we're going to hold it at the Tahoe Elementary on Wednesday, May 24th, for the Tahoe Park Town Hall. And then lastly, again, the Food Trucks Event on May 26th, 5:00 to 8:00. Hope to see you there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rick?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Valley High Community Town Hall is going to take place Thursday to 18th, from 6:00 to 8:30, at the Union House Elementary School. This is an opportunity to talk to representatives from every city department in the city of Sacramento and how we can make our community better and how we can serve you, the constituents. So once again, that's Thursday, May 18th, at the Union House Elementary School. This is the Valley High Community Town Hall. And then on Friday, the 19th, Trucks and Such will be at Goshabend Park. It's that time of year again where great food, incredible music and tons of family fun are a way of spending a great Friday evening. So come on out, we'll probably have about 3,000 to 4,000 people there. You don't have to cook dinner, you don't have to play games or bring board games, we're going to have all the games, all the food, everything you want for a great evening on Friday night at Goshabend Park.
Very good, thank you. Jay?
Thanks, Dural.
Hey.
A couple of things here, one is I want to thank Member Hanson and congratulate him on the open streets, I know it's a lot of work, unfortunately I'm out of town this weekend, but I know you'll have a great ride. Kind of along the same May is Bike Month theme, I want to thank Jennifer Donlin Wyatt. We had our first Tour de Sacramento and we had a number of people who rode, Ms. Ashby sent us off from North Natomas and Mr. Jennings met us at Goshabend Park down in the Pocket area. I was in the Goshabend Park, but you weren't out there. I went and talked to 60 young people with our mayor, so I took about five miles off, I still got my 30 miles in. But it was a good time and I think we learned a lot and we're going to make it an annual event. And Mr. Harris met us at Triangle Park, or what we thought was Triangle Park, up in Del Paso and rode with us for a while as well. So thank you, Jennifer, for putting all that together.
You said it's going to be an annual event.
It's going to be an annual event and I would hope that all of us can ride together next time.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll get you an electric bike, Mr. Mayor, if you need that.
Get me a tennis racket, I'll be up there.
I want to congratulate and just say Stonewall has its Four Freedoms Dinner tomorrow night and annual event, which is great, and been there many times, I'll be going. So I want to say thank you to that. Thursday night, Golf Course Terrace has its quarterly meeting, 7:00 PM at Harkness Elementary School. On Friday at 6:00 PM, Bell Coolidge has its annual ice cream social at Bell Coolidge Library and we'll be scooping ice cream there as well. So thanks very much. That's it.
Thank you. Next. Angelique.
Got it, thanks, Mayor. So first of all, I just, because I know sometimes when people ask for things, when council members ask for things from, in council comments, it's hard to gauge support. And I want to throw my name behind Councilmember Garrett's request on the butane to piggyback on the good work of Supervisor Phil Serna. I really think that's something we need to do and do quickly. And I know City Manager, that you're already looking at a, sort of a package of refinements to our ordinances relative to marijuana to make sure that we have stronger enforcement. And I want to make sure that both of those items move forward. The butane is particularly important for one component in public safety and particularly fire and critical. And as you know, the grow houses across the city are very hard to enforce against, in part because our own ordinances are not married up well with the state ordinances. So I just want to make sure that we reform that package so that in our communities where we have these illegal operations, that we untie our hands and allow our code enforcement and officers and building inspectors the ability to move forward and really deal with them, so they're not a danger to the community. And then I also, you know, thank you to all of you who sent me notes, including the mayor, on Mother's Day wishing me a great day. It was wonderful with my family. I hope all the moms in Sacramento had a great weekend, surely I hope you did as well. And I hope you guys spoiled the ladies in your lives and, or whoever your moms. And then lastly, I just want to tell people, and I think these events, this is the one kind of event, and maybe people have asked you guys too, but this is one that sometimes people ask me about, is there going to be a shred event, right? Because the stuff just piles up in your house of the paperwork you need to shred, and I don't know if you guys have as much as I do, but I have a lot. And this weekend, on Saturday, the Golden One Bank Credit Union is hosting an event, a shred event, that is free. You can bring up to five banker's boxes of stuff that needs to be shredded. It is a pull-up and drop-off. It's at One Sports Arena, which is the circular road around the old sleep train, so you just get in the circle and drive around it, take your boxes of things that need to be shredded. This Saturday, May 20th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, anyone can pull up and have five boxes that they want to have shredded, which I know a lot of people wait for those types of events, so I thought I'd announce it. That's it for me, thanks, Mayor. It's 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM this Saturday.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one or actually two announcements and then I want to close and...
Yes, adjourn in memory, of course.
A former councilman. So first of all, Jubilair Evangelistic Ministries presents Gospel in the Park Saturday, May 27th, from 12:00 PM, noon until 4:00 PM. It'll be held at Strawberry Manor Park at 200 Danville Way in Strawberry Manors. There's going to be gospel music, obviously, free food, clothes giveaway, games, music and lots of fun. All churches are invited to come and participate, and all people in fact are invited. Make sure to bring blankets or lawn chairs when you come out, so that's going to be again May 27th. And then on a sadder note, on May 5th, I had a nephew that was shot and killed in Sacramento and, and ironically, he was also the nephew of the late Sam Pennell. We shared a, a family member and, and he was the young man, Jordan Pennell, that was shot and killed. And, and so our family is dealing with that issue. The memorial service or the funeral will be this coming Thursday. But in addition to that, we also lost one of our community leaders and a former councilman, his name was Charles Bradley. And Charles Bradley actually served on the council when Grantland Johnson had been elevated to the Board of Supervisors and he came in and replaced Grantland. But he was a longtime community activist and very, just, just the kind of leader in our community that was always around and helping and supporting those in need in the community. And so he worked hard to improve the Del Paso Heights community during his life and his memorial service will be this coming Saturday, May 20th, 2017, and it'll be held at Allen Chapel AME Church in Sacramento, which is on Grand Avenue, almost immediately across the street from Grand High School, at 11:00 AM on this coming Saturday. So I'd like to adjourn our meeting in his honor.
Allen, Councilmember Warren, our deepest condolences. I mean, the death of Councilmember Bradley is very, very sad. The death of your 16-year-old nephew, senseless violence is just tragic and we're, we're really sorry. We're with you, okay? There's nothing else to come before the city council, we will stand in adjournment. Thank you.